Hear me?
Yes.
I'm unmuted. Okay, I want to call the Pedaluma City Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. There's nothing really to report out on closed session. And before we start, I would, the board would like to have a moment of silence for those who have needlessly lost their lives due to hate racism and/or police brutality, naming the most recent of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Manuel Ellis, Ahmet Aubry. I could name, the list is too long to name them all, but I'd just like to take a moment of silence for them. Okay, that was about 35 seconds and it seemed to go on forever. So imagine having somebody's neck on your knee for eight minutes. Anyway, the board would also like to commend and applaud those young people who are organizing and participating in Pedaluma's peaceful protests. We are proud of you and optimistic about the future with such amazing students. We commend you for taking the first steps and leaving the way and not just calling out racism and injustice, but to being anti-racist. We want to work with you and ask that you continue to call out injustices, not just in our country or town, but in our district as well. We want to hear from you and support you in these efforts. Pedaluma City Schools staff have made statements regarding racism, hate, and discriminatory acts. The Pedaluma City Schools Board of Trustees wants to echo those statements. There is absolutely no room for racism, hatred, discrimination, and discrimination in the Pedaluma City School District. We must work together to ensure that all students and staff feel safe and welcome in our schools. We believe that education is key, no matter how uncomfortable those vital conversations may be. To that end, last year, the Pedaluma City Schools Board of Trustees set an equity goal, which includes training for all staff in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and has partnered with Circle Up Education to provide that training. And hopefully, we will be able to get back to that soon. We must continue to listen to you and learn from our community to continue the fight against racism and discrimination and acknowledge the damage those kinds of acts have on our community. And with that, we will, thank you. Okay. Receipt of Mary Collins Charter School at Cherry Valley's renewal petition. Do we need to just acknowledge that or open a public hearing? For the Mary Collins Charter School at Cherry Valley's renewal charter petition? So I'm opening the public hearing. Do I have comments, feedback? Public opinion, anything?
Michelle, are there any comments on that? On the charter petition?
I do have one comment about the charter renewal.
Yes, yes, could you read that?
Okay, it's from Shannon Paris. She says, "Thank you for your time. When my daughter was having trouble emotionally right out of the gate of kindergarten, we couldn't figure out why. It was a good school in a good neighborhood. However, it became clear she wasn't fitting the box of traditional public school and needed a different environment. Just this past December, our family relocated to Pedaluma specifically for Cherry Valley. We saw an incredible opportunity to choose a school for both our daughters that supports them emotionally and allows them to thrive. The arts and nature-based curriculum is beautifully implemented, and I have no doubt their academic education at Cherry Valley will shape their entire life. Renewing the charter gives the opportunity to create wonderful humans, and it would be a disservice to the community not to have this school. Cherry Valley teaches the same values this community of Pedaluma exemplifies." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Michelle?
I'm sorry, Ellen, there were no more about the charter renewal.
Okay, all right, then I am going to close the public meeting. And we will move on to adoption and approval of the agenda.
Well moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? I'm opposed. All right, Chris. You are on for special recognitions, reports, and presentations. Budget revision.
Chris needs to be unmuted.
That would be helpful.
I'm trying to find her.
I found her and she's, she should be able to get on now. Yes, thank you. And then I'll also need you to allow me to share my screen. I've already done that. Thank you, Michelle. You're welcome. Okay, and thank you for Cherry Valley. Super excited about getting that going. Okay, so we're gonna start with the budget revision number three, and I'm gonna attempt to share my screens. Okay, so this is budget revision number three. This, I'm not gonna go through this line by line, you'll be glad to know. This is an agenda online and it basically talks about what budget revision number three is. Hopefully, this is pretty much our final budget revision of the year. There may be some minor tweaks that we make when we bring the adopted budget forward, because that will be reflective of both, and we'll be making tweaks and changes based on the standardized account code software that we have to run this through. Can you see the spreadsheet? Is that up now? No?
No, yeah, we're documenting.
Okay, let me go back to share. Hold on, I'm just trying to figure out how to change documents.
You can just stop share and then restart it with a different document.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how to stop share.
Hover over your menu on the top of your.
At the very top, you see where it says green, you're viewing Chris Thomas's screen?
Yeah.
Where it says view options? Open up that tab. And then drop down, say stop participants sharing.
I can stop it for you, Chris, if you want. Yes, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, let me take you to my infamous spreadsheets now. Okay, can everybody see the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. Phew, thank you. I'm still trying to figure this technology out. Okay, so I'm not gonna go through this at length, because I really wanna focus on the preliminary budget. But essentially, we have this first part that you're seeing, hopefully, is our unrestricted budget, and you can see column A represents our adopted budget, column B, first budget vision, and so on and so forth. Column D is our budget revision number three. And you can see the very first number we've dropped by our ADA slightly. Our P2 ADA was finished the end of February. We recalculated our LCFF, and you can see the net change is about $35,000. There's always gonna be some pretty large variances in between, but they don't really mean anything. It's just local taxes versus state aid, and essentially, we focus on that net change. Going down, there's not a lot of other significant changes other than to special education. We did reduce the contribution to special ed in large part because of some changes in the fiscal allocation plan. I'll share with that with you in a moment. You'll see that there are some increases in the areas of salary and benefits, administrative, classified. Remember, the board approved 3% raises, and so all of those raises have now been accounted for in this budget revision. And so that's why you're seeing some increases in the 1,300 and in the 2,000 range. And then, of course, the employee benefits change proportionally or according to the other changes. You'll see materials and supplies went up pretty significantly, and that's in large part because of those local donations that are going up up here. So as we, but as we receive local donations, we budget them in the materials and supplies budget for school sites to access. Part of this is also just preparing for some of what we're doing with classroom furniture. We know we're converting the library at Pangrove into a classroom. We've added two portables at McKinley, and we're now buying classroom furniture so that we can outfit those classrooms and get them ready for school. You'll see some adjustments here. Rentals in particular, you'll see a drop here, and that's because we've really gone through and done an in-depth analysis of all of our copiers. As you know, the last couple of years, we've purchased new copiers, and that is making a positive difference for the maintenance contracts that we have on those copiers and some of the former rental slash leases that we had previously. Other operating expenses, this $26,000 or variance is primarily based on the Gateway to College. So their ADA actually dropped, and their LCFF calculations therefore were lower. And so we adjusted their contract downward because of that drop in revenue. So you can see ultimately, we are maintaining deficit spending, so we're spending about $1 million more than we're taking in. I can share with you that a large share, this is really based on one-time expenditures, because if you recall, we also had a retirement incentive for our teachers, and these teacher salaries that have gone up here, in large part is as we're budgeting those retirement incentives. So the retirement incentives for about 21 retirees that we had for PFT unit members, those are one-time in nature, so as we then do next year's budget, those retirement incentives come out, and then we will realize the savings from the retirees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, are we gonna fulfill all the positions of people that have retired or?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, you know, we looked at it as overall FTE more than just person to person. And so we know that we're down teachers in the elementary, but we're actually adding teachers potentially in the secondary at the high schools. But then Pedaluma Junior High has actually been reduced, because of course, they're down about 50, 55 students. We know that we've closed Sixth Grade Academy and Gateway to College, so some of those positions went away. So it's kind of an up, we're down, we're up, we're down. At the end of the day, we'll be able to go ahead in August theoretically. We have all our staffing in place by then. We still have some vacancies. We'll actually be able to compare the overall FTE this year to next year, and then determine what level of savings we actually are seeing. Right now, there's still vacancies in the preliminary budget, so it's hard for me to tell exactly what step and column costs are or what savings we have from the retirement incentive. So it's not necessarily person for person, is I guess what I'm saying.
All right.
We also had a lot of, I would say a lot. We had numerous requests to come back from leave of absence, or actually to teachers that may have been on a job share 50/50, and they came back to full-time status. So that also has an impact. But basically, my overarching point is that we have a lot of one-time expenditures in this budget revision number three. We know it had about $350,000 to $400,000 in carryover for local grants and donations. The expenditures associated with that are one-time in nature. And then we did have a significant amount of retirement incentive that's also one-time. So the $1 million is not necessarily a structural deficit, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
Well, that's good to hear.
And then the reserves change proportionally. I have taken out this $400,000 for curriculum adoptions in large part, because we did actually do the Next Generation Science K8, and we actually did some for Kennelworth, so some, yeah, so really K8. We still have that adoption scheduled for next year for the high school, but we've taken out the set aside, because when we get to the preliminary budget, you're gonna see how we need that, we need that flexibility with those funds. Any questions on the unrestricted budget? Going over to the restricted side. I'll spend less time here. You'll see that we did get in a preschool grant, that's one-time, and some COVID-19 money. And so that's here. We'll be looking at the use of those funds. This preschool grant is restricted, and so is the COVID-19. We are anticipating spending a portion of this on software licensing related to classroom management software that'll help support our teachers. And then we've made adjustments to special education funding up here, and also down here in the 8792. And that's why, in large part, as we received the final information on how much funding we're gonna get under the fiscal allocation plan, we made those adjustments, and that's what dropped our contribution down. Again, you'll see here some increases to the same budget. So we had some special education teachers retire, so their retirement incentive would be budgeted here. We also have some CSI school grant positions. We had the increases in management, 3% in classified, and then an adjustment in health benefits, our employee benefits.
Chris, could you speak a little louder? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sure, I'll move my mic closer.
There you go.
My big snowball. Okay, so down here under materials and supplies or consumables, you'll see we transferred money out of the non-capital and mostly into materials and supplies. But we also moved about $170,000 of carryover for the parcel tax down into ending fund balance. So if you look down here under ending fund balance, this $169,999 is actually made up of a negative $1.01 resource and $170,000 for parcel tax. And we did that strategically so that we could continue to fund programs in our parcel tax, leveraging this carryover as we're looking at such significant reductions next year. Let's see, if there's anything else of interest. You know, there's always gonna be shifts and changes with contracts. Department of Justice grant, you know, we did contracts for the cameras, so you're seeing some of that here. Athletic donations, you'll see some of that here. Non-public agency, non-public school contracts will shift between this 51 and the 58s down here, but nothing of significance other than this $170,000. So at the end of the day, when I look at the combined budget, here is our components of ending fund balance. You can see that we maintain our 3% reserve, state required right here. We have our 2% reserve. We have the South County Consortium reserves for them that we have to set aside for them. That 170 for the parcel tax, and then the available balance. Now, this available balance is gonna become very key as we look at our preliminary budget. So with that, is there any other questions?
What do you mean by available? Is that for, because we have more than 3%?
Basically, it takes a look at the total ending fund balance, and it says of the total ending fund balance, we have all of these dollars that are set aside by the board. 3% reserve for economic uncertainty, the South County, the 2%, the restricted revolving cash. Everything over and above that sits in the available for the board to designate into other categories. Does that answer the question?
Yep, thank you.
And Chris, can you remind us the consequences of going, or not the consequences, but the trade-off of diving into the reserves?
Absolutely. I mean, reserves are one-time in nature. There was not a lot of available when I got here. We have built this up over the last three or four years. They accomplish, they're likened to a savings account, if you will. So if you, in your own personal finances at home, if you have a savings account that you use for those unexpected expenditures, this would be likened to that. And if you use your savings to pay for something, then that savings is gone theoretically, or that amount of the savings is gone. So it's one-time in nature until you actually are able to build that back up in the future. The other thing I would say about it is that the greater the amount of reserves that we have, the greater liquidity and cash that we have on hand. And so, just like a savings account, if you have money sitting in your savings, then you have cash on hand. And for us, you know, we have a lot of fluctuations in when we receive our cash, both from local property taxes. So we all pay our local property taxes in December and April. So a large amount of money that we get, we don't get until December and April. So if you look up here, these two first categories are state aid. These categories right here, these are all of the local property taxes that we get. So that's, that's, that's close to $40 million, $38 million perhaps. So 36 to 38 million, and this fluctuates, obviously. We don't get that big chunk of change until December and until April, but we're paying salaries and benefits and payrolls and all of that stuff. So having cash on hand and liquidity is very important, and the greater reserves, the greater cash reserves we have.
And is there, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought there was a a cost of money price to dive in below the state minimum required reserve level? Is there, in terms of borrowing from our, borrowing from our reserves?
So the reserve for economic uncertainty right here, we don't really, it makes it, it's kind of interesting, because it says reserve for economic uncertainty. So you think, oh, it's reserve for economic uncertainty, you can use it when you need it. But the fact is, you can't, because the minute you go below that 3%, then you go into qualified or negative territory. And especially if you do this in year one, because if you're already borrowing here and you don't meet your 3% reserves, it's gonna be really challenging to meet those in the out-years, unless there's some real one-time reason why that might happen. And then you'd have to develop a plan for how to restore it. But I would say the other thing is, if you go into negative, which means you won't meet your cash reserves, and therefore you have to borrow from the state, the interest rate for state loans is 15%.
That's, that's what I was getting at, okay.
I don't wanna confuse that with a TRAN, a Tax Revenue Anticipation Note, which is a form of borrowing that we honestly may have to consider next year if we can't, if we can't manage our cash. And that's basically a short-term mechanism that we can borrow at much, much lower interest rates that helps us just with our cash. It doesn't impact our budget at all. It only impacts our cash on hand. The challenge is, when we look at the state deferrals, and we're gonna talk about that when we get to the preliminary budget, and the state budget proposal in May that the governor came out with, he is proposing going back to state deferrals, which is where they owe us money perhaps for April, May, and June. Maybe we get $2 million a month, right, from state aid? Oh, sorry, we're not gonna give you that $6 million until July or August. But we have payrolls we have to meet in April, May, and June. That, that money becomes really critical for. Now, we can accommodate that if we have $10 million in our ending fund balance. But if we're down to only $3.7 million, you know, $3.2 million or $4 million, it's gonna become really challenging. So there's cash, and then there's reserves. They're two different things, but they're kind of related.
So this might be more relevant in the next budget, the, on the agenda, the preliminary budget. But it sounded like the legislature is, has passed a budget that would not make the cuts that Newsom had proposed. And that, but they said, they were talking a lot about, you know, deferring those. And so I just, is that the same language? I mean, it's, I mean, it looks, it sounds like they're just deferring it for a year.
That's a great question. They're using the same language, but it has two different meanings. Is this a good segue for me to go on to the preliminary budget presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay, Monty. Okay, now I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna attempt to stop share. I worked.
You did it.
Yay. And now I'm going to share a PowerPoint presentation. Okay, everybody can see that?
Yep.
Okay, so this, this, you know, I have spreadsheets. They're attached in Agenda Online, just like the preliminary, the budget revision number three. So all of that's there, there's a narrative there as well. I just wanna mention, there is a correction in my narrative where it said we have 5.5 million revenues over expense. We corrected that to say expense over revenues, because it really is intended to say deficit spending. So here is, here is that. Hold on a second. So total revenues, this is based on the spreadsheets that are attached. This is the unrestricted general fund, so it's the first three pages of the spreadsheets. Total revenue is 51 million, total expenditure is 56.6 million or just under, and that excess of expenditure over revenue, which is 5.5 million. The challenge with this 5.5 million, unlike that $1,060,000 that I just mentioned, there's not a lot of one-time expenditures in here. And the revenues that they've reduced in the May revise in our local control funding formula and others are ongoing reductions. It's not like they're saying, hey, we're gonna cut you 10% this year, but next year, we're gonna, in '21, '22, we're gonna restore that 10%. That would be a different issue, because that means that 5.5 million would be one-time. But if they reduce our base funding and supplemental funding and transportation funding, all of which is in there by roughly 10%, including the COLA, then that means this deficit, this structural deficit of expenditures over revenues is an ongoing deficit. And this is what's gonna make doing multi-year projections for the adopted budget extremely challenging. Now, the beginning fund balance and 9.9 million, our ending balance, therefore, it's simply the 9882 minus the 5503, 4.3 million, just under 4.4 million. And that means it brings our reserves down to 4.71. But if you back out those South County reserves, really, the Pedaluma City School reserves are at 3.72 or just under 4%. So I wanted to show you kind of a comparison of the LCFF. So in 1920, 69899, that's not gonna balance perfectly to the spreadsheets that I just showed you, because it doesn't include the prior year state aid. If you look, there's a prior year state aid in that spreadsheet. This is purely the LCFF calculations. And you can see that we dropped from just under 70 million this year to 64 million next year, and then 64.1 million, and then back down to just under 64.1 million in '22, '23. So what I mean, there's a structural deficit, I mean that, that change, that reduction of 5.9 million is ongoing. It's not like it jumps back up to 69, 70 million in '21, '22. That's the challenge with what the governor's proposed. He hasn't said, hey, we've got a one-time problem. He's basically said, we're chopping you 10%, and that chopping is going to be an ongoing chop. That's official fiscal term, by the way, chop. So net reduction, 7.92, that's the 5.9 million. But if you include the COLA, that we should have gotten a COLA. So now we're comparing it more to what we would have expected if the pandemic had not hit, then really, we're losing 10% or that 6.9 million. So if the pandemic had not hit, and we were now presenting a preliminary budget, I would be anticipating with a fully funded COLA that we would be over 70 million. Well, over 70 million. So does that make sense? And then I just show you the comparison for the current year, the budget year, and then the two out-years. And the two out-years, that's what we have to include in our multi-year projections. So if we don't get some relief from the legislature before I bring this adopted budget, the multi-year projections are gonna be dismal. So moving forward, multi-year projections, just talked about that as a structural deficit. Additional reductions will be necessary. If we don't get some relief from the legislature, we're going to have to look at cutting some pretty significant stuff on an ongoing basis. But the stuff part of that will not be adequate. So we've already gone through and literally, like you saw the analysis with the leases for the copiers, we have gone through this budget, this preliminary budget, and preparing it, and really, literally gotten down into the minutia of the budget to try to analyze it at the level of, okay, how much is, how much is grants copier? What's the lease? What's exact, you know what I mean? And bringing it down to a very close amount and hoping that they don't have overages next year. In other words, they use the copier more than they're, than they're expected to. So we're gonna have to look at positions and programs. We're in a, we're in a people business. 80%, 75% to 80% of our budget is in people. We're in a, we're in a people business, eighty percent, seventy-five to eighty percent of our budget is in people and, and program. So that's going to be something that our Budget Advisory Committee is going to have to really take a hard look at. Multi-year projections, we're going to need to assume in order to be considered fiscally solvent or have a positive certification, unless we get relief from the state legislature, we're going to have to assume a level of reduction without specificity to have a positive certification. So we're going to have to build in and those other adjustment columns that we're going to have to cut this amount of money and that will give the board a, a good idea when they see those multi-year projections that this is what we have to reduce in those out years in order to maintain minimally our three percent reserves. That five point five million already eats up the majority of the rest of that available. So remember, Maddie, that three point five million, well, that five point five million wipes that out and a good portion of the additional two percent we have as well. So we're really going to have to have a robust Budget Advisory Committee process. We're starting that in the end of June, on June twenty-fifth. We have another date set for July eighth. We're hoping that we have some better information on those two dates. That committee will then reconvene in September and continue the work as we work.
We have people that have volunteered to participate in the committee?
Yes, we have a lot of people.
Good.
We've identified who have stepped up, we're very grateful for that. Both of our unions, PFT and CSA have both stepped up and, and, and said we want to be, you know, a partner with that. They've identified their official reps, plus we have additional people that are interested. We have identified administrative reps, official administrative reps, plus additional administrators that will be on the committee mostly as resource, you know, to answer questions, what are impacts of cuts? And we need a broad-based view of things in order to take a look at this. We also have parents identified, community members, and we have two or three students. So we're pretty excited about that.
How many parents do you have, Chris? Do you know?
Of five or six.
And students?
At least two that I'm aware of, there might be a third, but at least two.
Good.
We have a couple out there that are outstanding, trying to get their, they've been speaking to their, their student population.
And I will tell you, the first year of the LCAB, I led one of the data committees that we had to look at. And we had a middle school student on our committee. And that student really added such value to that committee from their perspective. It was really, it was really wonderful to see the input of students on. And we had three different committees and each committee had a student and their participation was really invaluable. So I'm grateful we have students who want to participate.
Yeah.
Really, we tried to create a balanced, a balanced committee and so you can see that. And we're really hoping to create an opportunity for more conversations and really planning for longer-term cuts. This isn't about, the Budget Advisory Committee will look at twenty twenty-one, but in the bigger picture, they're really going to be looking forward to twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. Because with the timelines that have passed and since we've had such a short, such a truncated process, there's really not a lot of opportunity for us to to make big program decisions, not five point five million worth, that's for sure. So this is really looking, it's going to begin to look at the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year and certainly hopefully make some recommendations for, for twenty twenty-one if possible.
Chris, can I ask a, oh, sorry, finish your presentation first, now go ahead.
No, it's okay, please.
It was a big picture question about the concept of, of a preliminary budget in the, this very unusual time when the state budget hasn't even solidified yet. And I just wanted to ask what it means for us down the road? Do we expect to have, you know, more budget revisions, let's say in August after the income tax receipts have returned in?
No, it's, it's a, it's a great question. I mean, in a normal year, the May revise would have been ninety-five percent of what we would have expected to see, maybe the COLA would have tweaked a little, maybe whatever. The challenge with this year is that what Governor Newsom has proposed is, it borders on draconian as far as I'm concerned and.
Doesn't border.
No, I mean, I've just, it's in all of my career, I've never seen a governor come out with such a limited amount of time and, and just say, we're, we're cutting you ten percent. That I just, that's just, it's almost unconscionable in my mind.
Over his head is the problem.
Well, and it's unprecedented, the pandemic is unprecedented. So I know that he's trying to respond to an unprecedented situation, but to try to balance it on the backs of schools is, I think it's, it's, it's just, anyway. So if the legislature comes in and says, okay, that's not going to happen and they, they're able to work a deal with the governor, the challenge is that in July, or because of this year and the pandemic and the federal government coming in and delaying the, the, the timeline for taxes to be due to July fifteenth, it leaves us vulnerable, us, the state, us school districts to how the state then reacts after they receive all of those tax receipts in July. And the whole idea, it's not unprecedented to have mid-year budget cuts. And so it would, so it's kind of like a woo-hoo if the state, if the legislature actually comes in and does something what they've, what they're, what they've agreed to do, but now we're negotiating with the governor. The challenge is, I could see a mid-year budget cut coming. And so how do we react to that? So it's, it's going to continue to be, I think, a very volatile, a very volatile environment for us budgetarily until we get into August and we, and we kind of have a better idea of what the state's budget looks like and how they're going to balance that.
So building on that, the, you know, this preliminary budget, you know, it's a conservative one based upon the May revise, the governor's budget. And we're hoping that if there's any change, it's going to be in the positive direction. If that happens, should we expect, should we plan ourselves for our district to have a budget revision that looks in the opposite way of how we restore things mid-year based upon what happens at the state and federal level?
That's a really good question. So we're actually obligated by law to amend our budget forty-five days after the state, the governor signs the Budget Act into law. So we're actually obligated by law to provide the board with the impacts of that, you know what I mean? So we have to actually disclose typically there's very little impact. And so we're not having to disclose much because there's, any variances are pretty insignificant. But this year I anticipate, my hope is they'll cut a budget deal this week or in time for me to actually be able to tweak the revenues in our budget and actually bring you a a budget that's going to look better than it's going to look if I don't have that. So I'm hopeful that something will come out, but we'll see. I just don't want people to think that the state legislature comes out, they cut a deal with the governor and we're held harmless for a year, that that's the end of the story because I don't believe it's going to be the end of the story. We're still going to need that Budget Advisory Committee process to be contemplating what if we do get cut X number of hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars? How do we respond to that? So we're going to have to have those conversations.
Thank you.
So Chris, does that go back to my question from before about, you know, you said that hold har, hold us harmless for a year? Is, is that what's meant by saying that they would defer the costs and then we just have to cover it with loans or something? Or are you going to go into that later?
Yes, I was just going to, I was trying to jump ahead, so.
You can do it in your presentation.
Okay, I do have a slide talking about that a little bit.
Yeah, that's fine.
So moving forward, you know, we've talked about what we do know, which is, well, what we think we know, which is what the May revise said and knowing that that's probably going to change. But we also have this COVID nineteen impact that we're continuing to struggle with. So and we're looking at what are the financial impacts? So this is, we know that there's lots of student impacts, but this presentation is about the financial impacts. So I'm not going to touch on the student and the community and the family impacts, which I believe are dramatic. But financially speaking, there are also financial impacts. If we have to redesign instruction, what does that look like? And what are the cost implications of that? I mean, we've talked about instructional supplies, no sharing of supplies. As we've gone through this, I don't know, what is it? Fifty-page document from the state about how to open schools? I'm just reading it going, how do we cover the costs of all of this? And how do I even quantify the costs? So we're already, part of that budget revision included us buying things like X number of hand washing stations, which we know we're going to new. So we're, we've already started ordering stuff, trying to prepare for it. We're doing an audit, for example, to find out how many classrooms don't have sinks. And then how many hand washing stations do we need to have to address that? So instructional supplies, no shared supplies by students? How do we do that? If you think about an art class, how do we have art supplies that students don't share? Think about kindergarten, how do you have kinder supplies that students don't share? A lot of what we do is about sharing. And so what are the implications of that? What are the costs of that? Rethinking classroom space. You know, we've been walking around student classrooms trying to look at furniture and space and saying, okay, how do we, how do we accommodate social distancing, six feet apart or more with the current furniture that we have? So that's, that's a potential that we're looking at. Costs for addressing student staff safety as we reopen. Things like if we have to take everyone's temperature, we're actually investing in thermal equipment that takes people's temperature with a laser as they come onto campus. How many of those do we need? If we have to have additional hand sanitizer stations outside, so students are coming in, you take their temperature, they get a squirt of hand sanitizer and they're able to proceed into campus. So those are all things we're evaluating. So there's a lot of costs associated with that. And then just the impacts on staffing, what does that look like? Do we have adequate custodial staff, et cetera? So these are some of the things that we're going to be evaluating moving forward that are not necessarily built into this preliminary, preliminary budget. We talked about custodial services and revamping our cleaning schedules. We know we have to clean our restrooms more often and, and high-touch points, food service delivery. We had to reduce the food service, the cafeteria budget revenues by about three hundred thousand this year. So that is a fund that even though in nineteen twenty we were held harmless and that we're, we got our ADA early and so on and so forth, we have other forms of revenues that have been impacted and the cafeteria fund, the cafeteria fund is one of them. So what will food and delivery look like? It'll most likely look pretty different, at least for the first two, three, four, five months of the year. Transportation with, with adequate social distancing, how do we do that? We have home-to-school transportation. If we can only have one kid on a bench or a seat, how do you transport sixty, seventy, eighty kids? How many buses are we going to need? Can we even afford to continue to do home-to-school transportation? Or are we going to just focus on special ed? And then student enrollment, we're looking at how, what's the impact on the average daily attendance in our funding? And what's the impact of that on staffing if, if students don't come back? Because they're, they're concerned about coming back to a in-school environment. These are all just some of the impacts that we've been contemplating. So in this preliminary budget, we've already talked about a little bit. The revenues are based on the May revise, fifty-four billion dollars projected state deficit combined impact over two years. Dramatic reductions, unfunded COLA, these are ongoing reductions. I, I, the PowerPoint that I did last time that gets into more detail is online, it's on our website. So I, I've, I've had that there. And expenditures, they're, they're based on many of the assumptions, assumptions we presented in the last meeting. We've included all of the reductions that we had talked about. Those are also included in the narrative in the PowerPoint. And then, of course, the spreadsheets are attached that really go into more detail. I'm happy to go into that if you'd like. I thought a PowerPoint might, at a thirty-thousand-foot level, might be more helpful. Just to refresh our memories, this was right out of one of those slides. This was two point six million almost in reductions that we had identified. This was all built in and we still have five point five million in deficit spending. Summary of our reserves, you know, we maintain our revolving cash, our South County reserves are now at eight ninety-seven. We maintain our three percent, but look at what that two percent drops to six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars or just under a percent. And our total ending fund balance, whereas it was almost ten million, is now four point four, just under four point four million. And if, if this budget actually plays out and this actually happens, that's a permanent reduction. So that money goes away. Textbooks, I wanted to touch on textbooks because I know my narrative talked a little bit about textbooks. So, you know, I've been working with ed services as we have been working on this budget. And we know we've done, I think it's three adoptions, K-six, K-eight, definitely K-six over the last five years. Most recently, we did Next Generation Science. And so pausing those new adoptions for a year, we think is a good thing. It allows our school sites, our teachers to implement all of those adoptions. I mean, three adoptions in a short period of time for teach, for multi-subject teachers who are teaching all of those various adoptions is a lot. But I do want to assure people that we have Prop twenty funds available for the secondary because we spend a lot of that for the elementary and for the seventh and eighth grade, that we do have money set aside in this adopted budget for the nine twelve Next Generation Science for our high schools. So I just wanted to reassure everybody of that. Now, getting to your point, Maddie, I think you would raise this question. So the state legislature did reach agreement on the state budget deal. Remember, they're obligated to do that by June fifteenth by law or they don't get paid. And in that deal, it fully funds the LCFF, including that COLA. It holds ADA harmless for twenty twenty-one because remember I told you our ADA is going to be impacted by the COVID nineteen, we know that. And how do you even take attendance if you're on part-distance learning, part not? You know, what level of instructional minutes do we have to maintain? All of that stuff is still a big question mark, but they're talking about at least holding our ADA harmless. They're looking at fully funding categorical funds, at least at the nineteen twenty level, they're not offering any COLA. This, this budget deal, however, assumes federal funding. It assumes that money from the feds actually does come to the state of California. And it provides very little additional flexibility. It really does not contemplate a lot of flexibility. And it's still pending that July revenue. So basically the questions that you asked earlier, it's still pending that. There's a tremendous amount of uncertainty as we, as we may have to revise our budget in August based on whatever the actual state revenues come in at. And, and, and many experts believe that this is really only going to provide us with forty-five days, no, forty-five days relief because the budget reductions will be, end up being revisited in August. So it's really kind of a wait-and-see game right now. It's, it's the next two, usually like we do the preliminary budget, we immediately go in and prepare the SAC software and bring it to you in two weeks. And then we go into closing the books for nineteen twenty. But this is not going to be that year. We're going to continue to be monit, monitoring and working on this budget, trying to figure out where it's going to end up. I think that there is a little bit of glimmer on the horizon in that state revenues, at least the initial reports is that they are remaining strong for the taxes that are being turned in to date. So that is good news. We are officially in a recession, that's not good news, but not a surprise. And I'm hopeful that the recovery will be that will have a faster recovery than we certainly saw previously. And that'll be a more robust recovery. I can tell you that the economic factors that created the last recession were really not in existence for this. This is purely pandemic-related, this, this recession. And so there's still a lot of what I believe is optimism out there as far as finances go. And so I'm hopeful because, you know, economies are driven by people spending money and people feeling optimistic about spending that money. So we'll see. So I'm sorry if that was a really wordy presentation, but.
It's needed.
It's depressing.
So can you explain the difference in the, in, in identif, in in the, the terminology of deferral? Where the Senate is, the state senate is saying that, you know, we're going to defer any of these cuts for a year. And so, and that you can just take out loans or something. I, I'm just was wondering how that impacts. Is it just that we're going to look in a year? And if we don't get any money from the feds, then, then we're really in big trouble?
So it's a great question because I think there's two different forms of deferrals.
Yeah.
There's the deferral, the state refer, deferral where they're saying, we're going to, we're going to balance this budget by this budget. I mean, the state budget in part by allowing you districts to recognize revenue that we owe you. By allowing you districts to recognize revenue that we owe you. In this budget year twenty twenty-one, but we're not gonna recognize the expense until twenty-one, twenty-two when we actually pay you. So instead of paying you on time, we're gonna delay our payment. One, two, three, four months and just do it as a, a one-time savings for them. So that's the state deferrals that the governor proposed in his budget. And by the way. The legislature has also proposed that those deferrals would increase significantly. Back up to close to the nine billion that they were in the worst part of the recession. If the federal funding doesn't come through. So that's one form of deferral. And there is that level of deferral in both the state legislature and in the governor's budget proposal. But they're also talking about deferring in part. You know, not, kind of deferring the impacts at the state level of the budget cuts until twenty-one, twenty-two. It's kind of like, I don't know if you remember that per slide that I had showed you. Where they're gonna reduce the pers and stirs rates, but then there's a balloon payment that comes due in two years. I would liken it to that, that they're basically saying, we're not gonna, we're not gonna deal with it this year and we're just gonna defer it. Till twenty-one, twenty-two. And that's, that's good news and bad news. The good news is it gives school districts a little bit more time to plan and have. Robust conversations about how to address those potential cuts. But the bad news is, as I think I've said in my last presentation. You know, you, you gain momentum and you cuts, they accumulate over time. So if you can cut a little every year. You cut less overall. And so that's true at the state level too. Did that answer your question, Maddie?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question about the reserves. I mean, it looks like we have a lot to cut. What are the chances that we will be using some of those? And I don't know if you've thought about, like anticipating how much of those that we will likely have to use. Even given all of the cuts.
Yeah, in this preliminary budget, I'm going back to the reserve slide. So if I go back, if I go back to the first slide. Actually, it was back on the prelim- on the budget revision number three. So our, our beginning fund balance, which was our ending fund balance here, nine point nine million, right? We basically use all of our reserves except for our three percent. And that's six hundred and sixty-six thousand. So basically, this preliminary budget in its current form. Uses almost all of our reserves. Six hundred and sixty-six is pretty, is pretty paltry over a three percent. We cannot go below three percent or we go into qualified or negative status. And I would say that if I take this preliminary budget and I project it forward for twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. We will in twenty-one, twenty-two be below our three percent on the natural. By a significant amount if I don't assume cuts.
Okay, thank you.
This budget in its current form, this preliminary budget. Is not sustainable. Even one year out. Did that answer your question? So we literally go from a beginning fund balance of close to ten million. To an ending fund balance of just over, just under four point four million. Even with all the cuts that we've made to date. So you can see this maintains our two point seven eight nine and three percent. And now we only have six hundred and sixty-six thousand. We got rid of that four hundred thousand in curriculum adoptions and the two percent. Is now less than half of what it was. Other questions?
I just wanna go back to. The idea of the volatility of our situation right now. You know, we normally don't have a. Budget revision one, I think until October or something like that. And we see on the horizon at the, at a minimum. The real receipts from taxes after July fifteenth and, and maybe more than that with. A federal stimulus or state, state budget negotiations. Do we, should we plan on a revision much sooner than Oc- October? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yes, I would, I would anticipate depending on the changes that happen. There will definitely be a budget revision. At the latest, it'll probably come in September when we present unaudited actuals. Depending on how dramatic the change is, up or down. We'll definitely be disclosing it publicly. The, the impact of whatever the changes and we may actually come back with a formal budget revision as early as August. Depending on the change. So, so let's say that the state legislature and the governor cut a deal and they agree. And all of a sudden, I'm going in and recalculating our LCFF calculations and changing our revenue projections. In this adopted budget that we present to you in two weeks. And then they come in the end of July, based on the final receipts and say, oops, sorry, there's actually gonna be a five percent deficit now. Then we would have to come back to you and disclose that five percent deficit. And I would anticipate. We would take that by the second board meeting in August, no later than, if it was that dramatic. If they came back and said, oh, you're gonna have a negative point two, three percent COLA. Maybe it would wait until September. So it'll depend on how dramatic it is. And of course, either way, we are holding our budget advisory on June twenty-fifth and July eighth. So they'll be continuing to. Contemplate and we'll be setting additional meetings as necessary, depending on how volatile it gets. If, if state revenues hold strong and, you know what I mean, then. We may go into a more normal budget advisory committee mode and starting to meet September or October. After the July eleventh, July eighth meeting. Other questions? This is very depressing, I feel.
You're doing the best you can with very little. We have a raised hand. For a question, DM. Can somebody unmute him?
You want, you want that? We can't, okay.
I don't know who that is.
See if I can.
I think they could type it in, can't they?
Oh yeah, that's a good idea.
Type it into the chat.
Oh yeah, if it's typed into the chat, then I'll read it out loud.
We don't have a, the chat.
Oh, it's not activated?
Okay, you're unmuted.
Yep, so I just had a quick question from the parent community. I mean, this is pretty. This is, this is pretty depressing, you're right. Is there any call to action? For parents or family, is there anything we should be doing right now?
Writing and calling your representatives.
Especially, yeah, feds especially, I would say, you know, it's a sad. Reality, the way our fiscal systems are set up, but the feds are the only ones who print money. And the state can't do that. So, yeah, federal stimulus.
Our state legislators as well.
Yeah, and that senators are really, really important because it's being, the, the stimulus is being held up in the senate. And we have. You know, sympathetic senators, but we still need to let them know. In massive numbers.
Yes.
Is there someone on the board that could potentially help? Draft a message like a boilerplate that we can share with families? That makes it a little bit easier to reach out to these representatives?
Absolutely. In fact, CSBA has some boilerplate. Things that we can figure out how to put out publicly so people can.
And, and we passed a resolution, I think it was on our last board meeting, that has language, calling on federal, federal stimulus.
Okay.
Can you maybe read the resolution?
Thanks for that. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
All right, well, I, um. I, it's a hard presentation to know how to end because it really is. It's really a wait and see and I'm. I'm super hopeful that we have more information that can help me reflect a more positive adopted budget when I come, when we bring it forward. In two weeks, but if we don't, if we don't hear anything, I mean, my deadline, because I've gotta do all the state reports and stuff is really by Friday. So I'm hopeful if we hear something Friday, maybe Monday morning, I could make. The recalculations for all of our LCFF and, and bring you hopefully a little bit more positive adopted budget. If not. Please know the multi-projections will have to. Reflect some level of reductions in both certificated and classified. Salaries and they'll be unspecified. What we'll do is we'll talk, we'll speak to. We will speak to the process that we're using to identify those. And hope that the county office of education still gives us a positive. A positive budget because they're gonna have to believe. Our commitment to making that level of reduction to stay positive. They're gonna have to. They're gonna have to believe that that's, that's, that's real.
Chris, can you touch on that for a second? How often does that county review? At, at what point do they make decisions about our rating as qualified negative?
That's a great question. I mean, literally, we, we report information to the board and ultimately to the county. Four times a year, right now at our adopted budget, when we close the books in September. When we report first interim in December as of October thirty-first and then second interim in March as of January thirty-first. But. If the county office at any point believes that some event has happened that. That creates a significant concern for them, they can give us a, a going concern. They can actually, you know, say this is a going concern. I, I'm just, I've, I'll be honest with you, in all of my years, I've never presented a budget that looks like this. This is, this is quite dramatic and I'm. You know, I, anyway, so. So we're gonna have to write a strong narrative and the board is gonna have to really support. Because we wanna have a robust process. We want to have the dialogue. With all of our staff, teachers, classified administrators. And our parents, our community and our students to say, okay, if we have to make really dramatic. Possibly draconian cuts, what does that look like? And then, and, and, and for how long and how do we? How do we then maybe develop a process to restore when, when we're able to? So those are all conversations we need to have. And I think that there's gonna be, I mean, if there's any good news or bright spot, it's that we are not the only ones in this boat. Every district in the state of California, including the Tamaulipas Union High School District, which is one of the wealthiest. I've heard they, they're having to cut a, a lot of money and so. We're not the only one that, that is gonna be in this boat. There's gonna be a lot of districts. We're, we're well positioned. We were well positioned to address this and it's that big that even for us, this is big. So I'm not sure how the state and the county offices are gonna try to address that. So. I think there's gonna be a lot of def- districts that go into qualified and negative status. I really do. If something doesn't. If the state legislature doesn't do something with the governor. So thank you for understanding and. Again, I wish I was bringing you a very different budget.
Well, it's not your fault. Okay, we are moving on to comments from the public. And before those start, I just wanna remind you that while the board values input from the public. We cannot comment on anything that is not on the agenda. So we listen, we take notes, but we cannot comment. Michelle?
Hi, we have close to thirty comments tonight. So Ashley and I will both be reading. I'll start and she'll finish. Our first comment is from Lee Boys regarding budget and textbooks. I have heard from the co-facilitator of the nine through twelve science adoption committee that Cliff DeGraw has assured her money was set aside. Despite this budget item that states there will be a pause in secondary science adoption. I would like to ask the board to verify that money is indeed set aside for the completion of a current ongoing process to adopt. The next generation science nine through twelve. Science for the two core classes, physical, earth science and biology. Thank you for this verification.
And. Just to verify that, we just watched the budget and we have the money for the new, for the NPS. Books and what you need. So it's there.
Okay, the next comment is Susan Smith regarding budget and textbooks. In the mad scramble to find savings during this disastrous time of pandemic. The district is contemplating a pause in textbook adoption. Does this also include online curricula? It would be short sighted, to say the least, to restrict our ability to adopt a new curriculum that can easily be used in distance learning. All textbook adoptions must be board approved anyway, right? Just deny them on a case-by-case basis rather than a blanket no that could backfire later. Please leave the door open to adoption of new online textbooks that can help tremendously with distance learning. Next is Christina Camacho regarding textbooks for twenty twenty-one. I teach biology and AP environmental science at Petaluma High and wanted to comment on the purchase of biology textbooks and curriculum. Our current textbooks are old and well beyond their usefulness. We began piloting McGraw-Hill biology textbooks and online curriculum this past semester. And have come to an agreement among PHS and Casa Biology teachers that is good. With all the challenges we're facing in the twenty twenty-one year, please don't let curriculum be one of them. Please do not pause the adoption of nine through twelve textbooks for two years. As a teacher of eleven years, I've learned to be creative, resourceful and to fend for myself and my students. But I don't have it in me to continue figuring out how to make something from nothing when it comes to textbooks and curriculum. I respectfully request that we purchase the McGraw-Hill textbooks and online curriculum platform for PHS and Casa Biology classes. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next is Adam Camacho regarding textbooks at nine through twelve grade level. I am a PCS parent of two PHS graduates and am unhappy about the pause in purchasing of textbooks for nine through twelve grade. My wife teaches science at PHS and desperately needs textbooks and curriculum to do her job. As an IT professional, I cannot imagine being asked to do my job without the basic equipment necessary. This is what teachers are asked to do so much of and it needs to be remedied. I ask that you allow PHS and Casa teachers to continue on with their pilot and purchase of McGraw-Hill textbooks and curriculum for nine through twelve science. As a community member, I wanna see schools fully funded with the resources they need. And as a family, I do not wanna see my wife need to spend money out of her own pocket to cover curriculum needs. Next is from Connie Williams regarding board resolution nineteen twenty thirty-eight. Board members, I am responding to the proposed elimination of paraprofessional library coordinators at Pen Grove School and Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. The result of this action would be that the libraries would close. Our students face a future that relies on their ability to work with and on technological platforms that require that they. A, know how to use the technology and B, can read critically and understand the information in front of them. We've seen the library coordinators at each of these schools step up during the overnight pivot to online learning. And provide not only technical support, but reading and literacy support as well. The resolution for the agreement to recharter Cherry Valley states that. This love of literacy is developed through the strong Cherry Valley library program. In partnership with the implementation of the ELA Common Core State Standards in the classrooms. That resolution further acknowledges that one of the many excellent attributes of the school is an extensive school library. Both of these would disappear immediately. While it may seem that online learning doesn't need a library, nothing is further from the truth. Online support is equally crucial and the library coordinators provide important programming that complements teacher instruction. Furthermore, they make connections to the public library, can host valuable online resources like the statewide online content. And see to it that every teacher has access to and can use them with their students. While we don't yet know about the availability in the coming year to the library print materials. There's every possibility that they can be made safely available for checkout at some point. Accountability for those materials is crucial, especially in these times of budget crisis. Your library staff is tasked with that oversight, organization and circulation of those materials. Anything less than an open school library, whether online and in person. Greatly diminish it, diminishes the effectiveness of the total educational program. Devalues your investment in library materials and short changes your students as they prepare. Devalues your investment in library materials and short changes your students as they prepare for life in an information society. Closing these school libraries will close what is for many students, the only access to reading materials they have. I recognize the fact that many programs will be asking for your continued support. However, the library program is the one that positively impacts all the students at each school site. Please reconsider this action. Petaluma families have voiced their support for school libraries. By twice passing measures that were sold to them as direct funding for these libraries. Please honor that support by keeping these libraries open and staffed by these library coordinators. And next is Nathan Libacap. Petaluma Citizen and Petaluma City Schools Elementary Librarian of Record. Dear PCS School Board. It was a shock to hear about the sudden elimination of the two elementary library coordinator positions at Cherry Valley and Pen Grove Elementary. Which were quickly followed by rumors of eliminating all elementary library coordinator positions in the district. Our community's school libraries, along with our robust music and art programs, are unique in Sonoma County. These programs reflect the priorities and the values of our community. In fact, Petaluma citizens have overwhelmingly supported any school library related bond or parcel tax that has appeared on the ballot. You are in the unique position to revalidate and reiterate our community's commitment to school libraries. It was also a shock to read that these positions could be eliminated due to lack of work. School libraries are not just the physical books they contain. During the distance learning period of this school year, the elementary library coordinators, April Derby, Lori Lutz, Alice Kreisdell, Carly Merrill. Kathy O'Sullivan and Vanessa James moved quickly to familiarize themselves with digital library options. They recorded read alouds for parents to access at any time for much needed breaks and enrichment. In anticipation of the coming school year, they attended weekly elementary library coordinator meetings to discuss current best practices. For for reopening libraries according to professional and state guidelines. They were prepared to help coordinate the new student one cards being rolled out by the Sonoma County Library. A partnership approved by this school board. April and Lori, whose positions are being considered for elimination tonight. Worked in collaboration with their classroom colleagues to recreate the library visits their students and teachers relied upon during the school year. School libraries are the great equalizer. There are very few positions in our schools that work with all members of the community. Our elementary library coordinators are not limited by classroom rosters. At their sites, elementary library coordinators serve every single student of every age, gender, income, level. Ethnicity, culture and physical ability. They work with the site administrators to create summer reading programs and host author visits. They support classroom teachers with research materials and independent reading. They support families all over Petaluma. At a time when community is more important than ever, when the communication on comp and comprehension of information is more important than ever. Our elementary library coordinator should continue to serve as community builders. Their hard work in the past and their future potential should be reexamined and supported, not eliminated. The severity of the budget cuts that will have to be made cannot be ignored. I know they are not being considered lightly. In a perfect world, you would not have to be faced with these difficult decisions. I am hopeful that you will continue to work hard to create a budget that reflects and supports the values of our diverse Petaluma community. Thank you.
Get a little closer to your microphone.
Oh, sure. Sorry. Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. This is from Megan Gazoli regarding resolution 192038. Good evening. I'd like to go on record with the public comment regarding the action item to lay off our library coordinator position at Mary Collins at Cherry Valley. I have been on the Friends of Cherry Valley Library Committee for five years and am currently serving as president for 2021 school year. The library coordinator position is invaluable to the entire Cherry Valley School community. Whether the 2021 school year commences on campus or at home with distance learning instruction. This position's value remains unchanged. The students, families and staff rely on our library coordinator for support and reading recommendations on a daily basis. The following are only a few of the many tasks that our library coordinator, April Derby. Performed in the months of April and May during shelter in place. Held eight classes per week via Zoom, continuing to deliver library instruction and read aloud to students. Four weekly administrative meetings via Zoom. Librarian meetings, principal advisory council meetings. Hosted online author event with author Catherine Patterson for grades four, five. Planned for our annual summer reading programs, including ordering the books, cataloging and arranging their distribution to families. Checked in library books returned by families on the last day of the school year. Shared screencast instructions with families on how to apply for an E card through the Sonoma County Library for access to electronic materials. While our school library was closed. Additionally, Mrs. Derby responded to numerous emails from teachers, middle school students and families. Requesting support and book recommendations. She held virtual read alouds for students, which which provided a sense of normalcy and consistency in their lives when they couldn't physically attend school. It was her plan to continue to support teachers, students and families in these ways. For the 2021 school year, as well as add back in the circulation of physical library books. In a similar model being used by Sonoma County Public Library. Cherry Valley families desperately want the opportunity to borrow physical reading materials from our library as soon as possible. In summary, Cherry Valley's library coordinator, April Derby, is deeply relied upon by our students, families and teachers every single day. To say that Mrs. Derby is the heart of our school and is an understatement. Not only does she know each student by name, but also knows what their interests are and what they like to read. Sometimes she knows what they're, what they'd enjoy reading before they do. She is the driving force behind our students' love of books and motivation to read, whether they are in kindergarten or in eighth grade. With the possibility of more distance learning on the horizon, the need for Mrs. Derby to maintain our students' connections to books is imperative. In the June 3rd PCS letter to families. The first thing recommended for our children to do to help retain learning from this past school year is to read. To have our school function without our library is unimaginable, unexpected. And would be an unmeasurable loss to our students. Please consider continuing keeping this position active and funded for the 2021 school year. I sincerely thank you for listening and for your consideration. Next is from Michelle Santa Maria, the Sonoma County Library Children's Library Librarian. Hello, Petaluma City School Board. I'm reaching out to you today as a Petaluma resident and public children's librarian. In my work, I have the pleasure of working closely with classified staff, including the amazing PCS library techs on a regular basis. We work together to empower students with research skills, digital literacy, community, community engagement and modeling the love of learning and reading. These library tech positions are so important for any school environment, virtual and in person. Please do not eliminate these positions. They are essential for the educational development of our Petaluma students. Thank you for your hard work and time. Next is from Megan Malone. Regarding staff layoff of staff at year round schools. My name is Megan Malone and I am a parent of a rising seventh grader and a rising fourth grader at Cherry Valley. I am the chair of our education foundation and have served on our PTA board. I sometimes jokingly say that when my tenure on the educational foundation board is over next year. I will join the Friends of the Cherry Valley Library because I have been working my way up to the most important cause at our school. April Derby's influence goes far beyond the library walls. She knows each child well enough to make book recommendations tailored to their interests and their reading level. Feeling seen and known by a caring adult in this way makes every child feel a bit safer and more confident at school. During distance learning, she has been participating in Zoom classes and providing those spot on recommendations for our kids. Maintaining that crucial emotional connection with students during an often tumultuous time. One of the reasons that I love Cherry Valley is that the school has a unique kind of caring culture. Our kids are good to each other and they feel comfortable being who they are. There is an off cited study by the Princeton psychologist Diana Tamir that demonstrates that people who read more books have higher levels of social, emotional intelligence and empathy. With that study in mind, I'd say it is quite possible that Mrs. Derby is directly responsible for our warm, inclusive school community. In a time of uncertainty and upheaval, we all need more of that. Thank you for your time and consideration. And then from Lori Lutz, she's the library coordinator at Pen Grove Elementary School. I feel very fortunate to work at a school where I am supported by my principal, the PTA and all the staff. I spent the last month of distance learning packing up our entire library. Thousands of books and everything else in the library, anticipating a move to a brand new space on campus. I also spent hours researching and placing an order for hundreds of new books for our library. I am very excited to return to work as soon as possible. I am in full agreement with the concerns of April Derby at Cherry Valley. Our positions, while different in hours, are very much the same work. Thank you for reading and hearing my comments. The next is from Mary Dimick. Regarding medical insurance. Currently, the cost of medical insurance is one fourth of my paycheck. If my hours are reduced, I will go down to 75% coverage. The loss of pay and the additional cost of insurance would present a real hardship. I am asking that if my supervision hours are cut, and since it is temporary, that I am kept at 100% coverage. Next comment is from Loretta Kusmagi, President, CSEA, Petaluma Chapter 212. Regarding item 12.1.1. Dear School Board Members. I'm sure you have seen the classified reductions, layoff notices that will be brought to the board meeting for a decision tonight. We understand that both Mary Collins at Cherry Valley and Pen Grove will be starting this next school year with distance learning. But the budget has not been decided yet for this next fiscal year and could be much better than the may revise that was given. These are uncharted waters for everyone and we ask that you pause and think thoroughly before making decisions about layoffs. Are you aware that our people in these classifications have been doing so many other things during this past time of distance learning? Examples of things, receiving instruments, distribution of materials, receiving library books. We would like you to remember that the classified employees of Petaluma City Schools are an integral part of both the school and the city community. These are serious decisions that have long term consequences. The classified ranks have suffered layoffs more often than I care to remember. We have not yet heard how many people this will affect. I believe it will be more than 15. I ask that you take some time and ask some questions of the school district before you render a decision. Thank you for, for your consideration in this matter. And next is from Linda Judah. Linda says, I would like to request some clarity on how the district is formulating a plan for the 2021 school year in light of COVID-19. Is there a committee looking at options? How were the options given to parents in the recent survey derived? Are any other options being considered? Will there be emphasis placed on social and emotional health of students and staff as well as learning? Also, in light of recent events, will the district make a public commitment to address and dismantle systemic racism within our schools? Will the district commit to diversity and staffing? Will the district commit to removing SROs from school sites in favor of adding counseling staff and student family services? Thank you very much. Next is Casa Grande parent Carrie Popovich. Greetings all. So I'm sure you're aware, we were sent a survey asking what sort of school we'd feel comfortable with for the coming semester. And after reading it and trying several times to answer the questions. I talked with the head of special ed and then I called my son's doctor. I confirmed that yes, my son, who's obviously in special ed, is considered medically high risk. He attends CASA, will be a sophomore and attends with a full time aide. I then went to Facebook to chat with friends about their feelings about filling out the survey. I felt the survey was unanswerable without the schools first letting us know what sort of precautions were going to be taken. And then after the school gives us their plan, I can take that to our doctor. And have a realistic conversation and weigh the risk to his health versus the risk to his development and mental health. These are the questions we think need to be answered. Are they going to make kids wear masks? Are they going to make kids wear masks correctly? What are they going to do about the kids who refuse? What do they plan to do when the inevitable parent decides to sue because they've decided making masks is a violation of their child's civil, religious, whatever rights? How are they going to handle lunchtime, cleaning and sterilization? What's going to happen when it rains? And then more comments from friends. I also went them, want them to address. The extreme pressure the students feel to make up work when they miss school for normal illnesses. It takes so long to make up missed work that kids would just rather go to school sick instead of stay. After school or miss lunch to make it up. That culture hasn't changed and now consequences of that can be much more grave. Interested to hear more from them. How do they plan to handle the CDC guidelines about safe distancing, six feet apart in a classroom? How will social distancing be enforced elsewhere on campus during breaks, bathrooms? What's required of students rich to return after any illness? It used to be fever free for 24 hours. Does it now require a doctor note to return if someone misses a day because they're sick? How can you trust they're okay to come back after just a day or two? I'm sure there are more questions we should be asking, but honestly, I'm still recovering from the last Zoom school adventures. Thank you for your time. Looking forward to hearing answers. And my last one is from Sandra Larson. COVID has changed the way we educate our students, at least for now. At this moment, there are far more questions than there are answers. The Petaluma Federation of Teachers is committed to working with the district to provide the best possible education for all of our students. We realize this will take a great deal of give and take from all parties. And we are willing to do the work necessary to lay the proper foundation before instruction begins. I have learned a great deal since becoming the president of PFT. One important lesson I have learned is the need for a consistent, understandable message that is clearly communicated to all parties. It is equally important to stay on message as that builds trust and understanding. I have tried to do that when communicating with our members during this stressful time. I have communicated that we are working with the district through various committees and that the effects of any changes to our working conditions would have to be negotiated. It was my hope that this message would develop trust with district administration while relieving the anxiety of our membership. My message has been overshadowed by district communications. First, we were all surprised when the video regarding next year's instruction models was released to the public before any information was communicated to staff. That was followed by a parent audit that gave parents three options to choose from before the effects of those options could be negotiated. This was made even worse when another interpretation of next year's instruction models showed up in a Petaluma family's Facebook post. The lack of clearly communicated, understandable message from the district led to much confusion, anxiety and stress to our members. We are doing great work in the committees that have been established. We are working together to develop a framework on how to proceed. We need a clear and consistent message regarding that work that can be sent to all stakeholders. That will build the trust we must have to provide the quality education that our students deserve. And now Ashley will read the remainder of the comments.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, and my voice might go in and out a little bit. I apologize for that. So my first comment is from Sheila Morrissey and the topic is racism in our schools. I think we need a many faceted approach to the problem of racism and white supremacy in our school system. I want to start off by saying that I recognize that I benefit every day from white privilege. I work to recognize this privilege and call out racial injustice every day in my efforts to be an anti racist. I believe that we, the white educators and community members. Need to be the ones who are dismantling the white supremacist systems that are embedded in our education system, in our own community, in whatever way we can. While I believe this is work we must continuously address, work on and revisit. I also believe that there are several key points we need to acknowledge currently. First is teacher staff training. Although our diversity and inclusion training for district staff beginning was postponed from the beginning of March. I think it is imperative that this training starts this summer immediately. I know that we all became teachers because we wanted to help make the world a better place by helping children. However, we also work within an education system that is based on white supremacy and most of us from a place of white privilege. When we are called out on our inherent biases, we all react defensively and argue that we are one of the good ones. We have worked in communities of marginalized students. We donate to marginalized communities. We have traveled and seen the world. I feel this personally. I have spent 53 years living in a system that values my white skin above all others. And that I benefit from in innumerable ways. When I am called out on my racist behavior, it feels uncomfortable. I feel attacked. I feel. When I am called out on my racist behavior, it feels uncomfortable. I feel attacked. I feel guilty. All of this, however, does not allow me to make excuses or to answer with a list of all the reasons why I am one of the good ones. The call-out is not about me. We need to listen and learn about how our actions, our non-actions, our words, our textbooks, our lessons, our movies, our books, all of it, impact our students of color. We need to do the work to dismantle these systems of white supremacy within ourselves, call each other out when we make mistakes, uplift the voices of BIPOC students and communities, and learn how to work collectively towards a solution that makes our world a better one. Second is making the safety of our BIPOC, which is Black Indigenous People of Color, students a priority. We need a safe way for the students to report incidents that occur in school. We like to think that here in Petaluma, people aren't racist, that there aren't many incidents of ignorant behavior, that all people feel welcome. That is a lie. What I know to be true is that students don't report when things happen because they are afraid. What I know to be true is that students are afraid of pushback from other students, from teachers, from staff. We need to keep a ledger of incidents. We need a way, maybe an app, for the students to report when they are victims of racism, sexism, homophobia, religious bias, anti-LGBTQ+ bias, and any other Title IX violations. Students who infringe on the rights of another person to be safe at school need to face consequences after the first offense. No excuses. Students who are the victims need to know how to report an incident and be able to do so anonymously, free from fear of becoming a victim the second time for having reported it. We cannot fail our students, especially students who are marginalized in society at large. Schools must be safe for these students above all else. Three is an inclusive education. We need to overhaul the textbooks and trade books that are used to teach our students in favor of diversifying the narrative we teach. Our schools teach from a white perspective with a limited diversity. This needs to change. Our students must be taught how to fight ignorance in their own life and learn from different voices. Four is staff diversity. We need to actively and purposefully recruit more BIPOC staff. There is little to no diversity on the PCS staff. How can our students of color trust our decisions if we are majority-white? Our campus and teaching body needs to use the plethora of resources available to hire beyond tokenizing diversity in order to strengthen the voices of the community and continue fighting racial injustice. Okay, my next one is from Amaya Gray. The topic is racial injustice statement. Okay. As a student of PCS and someone who benefits from white privilege, I feel it is my duty to educate myself and my white peers and community members. We need to dismantle white supremacy and systemic racism in this country, and I feel a place we need to start is in our education systems. We need to do more than make statements and empty promises. We need to be held accountable because accountability is one of the only known factors that lead to behavioral changes in people who occupy positions of power. To start with, I feel the staff and administration need to be actively anti-racist in all aspects of teaching and leading. This means more diversity in our curriculum, active and direct punishment for any discrimination that violates a student's Title VI rights, and a more anti-racist education within schools. I believe that the curriculum in our English and history classes does not have enough diversity and therefore does not accurately represent the people of this country. Almost all of the books we are assigned to read in our English classes are written by white people, and some, like Huckleberry Finn, are filled with racist portrayals. There are countless resources online for literature and textbooks written by BIPOC and about the world from a more diverse perspective. Dismantling white supremacy starts by making sure students are not educated using tools solely written by and about white people and introducing the works of people of color into our curriculum. I believe that as a district, we need to take further steps to both call out and reprimand racist and discriminatory behavior in our schools. While some staff members will disagree with me, I can tell you without a doubt that discriminatory behavior happens daily in our schools, and it is not reported because students are scared of further harm that will come to them by speaking up. I can speak to that from personal experience as a student in the PCS district. There needs to be a system of anonymous reporting put in place in all schools, one that leaves the name of the reporter out altogether so that students do not feel the same fear I felt after I spoke up. Whether it is utilizing an app like Stop It or some other technology, it needs to happen so that we can really see what is going on in our schools. I also feel that any discrimination needs to be dealt with immediately with both punishment and education. Finally, I strongly suggest that the Board of Education severs all contacts with the Petaluma Police Department to get them off our campuses and out of our schools. The criminal justice system is one of the most racist systems in America, and to be really anti-racist, we need to remove police officers from our schools. Instead of letting law enforcement police our schools, which are the only safe haven for some students, we need to be paying our teachers more and bringing in better resources for our education. Now is the time when we need to be taking action. Racism should not be tolerated in any form, in any place, in our educational systems. Enough is enough. We, as members of this community, need to hold ourselves accountable. We need to make the change, and we need to do it now. We need to stand with the Black community and the students of color. We need to stand with them, and we need to fight for them. Let me double-check. I think that was it. Yes, okay. And then I have another couple. Okay, this is by Sarah Andropolis, Petaluma tied North Bay LGBTQI families. And the topic is PCS Student Resource Officers/Law Enforcement Contracts. As everyone here is aware, over the past couple of weeks, the youth of Petaluma have been out in the streets, joining their peers nationwide in protesting the murders by police and others of Black individuals, including George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and Tony McDade. The youth of Petaluma are showing up in solidarity with Black Lives Matter and to demand an end to institutional racism and a law enforcement system that allows the murder of Black people and other acts of police brutality and racial terror to occur virtually unchecked. We, as parents, community members, teachers, and school administrators, must support our youth, many of whom are PCS students, in listening to them, keeping them safe, and demanding anti-racist action from all of our public institutions. We must be decisive, clear, and unequivocal, not only in our solidarity with Black Lives Matter, but also in acting with a sense of urgency to make PCS campuses inclusive, welcoming, and safe for students of color through specific policy actions. As a starting point, PCS must cancel any existing contracts with law enforcement, though it is my understanding that there is not a current contract with the Petaluma Police Department to have SROs or School Resource Officers on PCS campuses. The district should decline to enter into any future contracts to have SROs on any PCS campus. Police have no place in schools. They do not make schools safer, and to the contrary, research shows that in many places, the most likely outcome of having police on campus is for Black and Brown students to be subject to police violence at school as well as disciplinary action at an even greater rate than they currently are, which is already disproportionately high and subjects those students to a greater risk of encounters with law enforcement in the future. Moreover, the presence of law enforcement officers on campus can be threatening and traumatizing for students of color, LGBTQ+ students, students with disabilities, and others who do not feel safe around police. Please take decisive action to keep police out of PCS schools. Instead of expending time, money, and other district resources seeking grants or other funding to support the presence of law enforcement on PCS campus, PCS should direct resources towards funding measures that actually serve to keep students of color safe and supported, such as hiring, supporting, and retaining a diverse group of educators, staff, and administrators at all levels, increased counseling services, and implementing an ethnic studies curriculum, as many cities within the Bay Area and throughout California have done. These are concrete actions that PCS can take to follow up its recent video message regarding racial injustice and work toward the shared goal of making Petaluma schools safe, inclusive, and welcoming for students who continue to be impacted by systemic racism and inequities. Okay, and now, let me take a sip of water. I have, from Jessie Redfield, Taking Action Against Racial Injustice. Hello, my name is Jessie Redfield, and I am an educator at Petaluma High School. I am electronically standing here, standing before you in response to the Petaluma City Schools video released less than a week ago, supporting the fight against injustice. I urge the board and the district to do more than just stand against injustice. We must take action within our staff, within our curriculum, and within our student groups to be anti-racist and to make actual change. We work and live in an overwhelmingly privileged community, which means we often turn a blind eye to the racism and hate that many of our students experience daily. These students rightly feel unseen, and they then assume that most staff do not care about them or their experiences. When you do give the students a voice in the classroom and ask them to speak their truth, this is what they say. "One young man of color was told by a teacher early on to befriend the white kids and act like them because they were the ones who took AP classes and went to college." "A young woman of color told me, as she walked through the halls as a freshman, students hurled, quote, 'terrorist' at her, and no one stepped up to defend her." "Another young woman of color was afraid to own her Latina identity because peers told her she was, quote, 'the good kind of Mexican.'" She didn't get to learn about her heritage in history classes, only that of white and European cultures, and was told cultural appropriation wasn't real in front of the entire class. "We owe more to our students of color than what we've been giving them. As a teacher, I know that education can change the world, but it can only do so when educators and staff are given the proper tools and training. All staff need specific action and action-oriented anti-racist professional development. Many adults, especially white adults and amongst those white teachers, are uncomfortable talking about race with their students. However, I can't even begin to imagine how uncomfortable it must be for our students of color to be called a derogatory slur in the quad and not feel safe enough to tell an adult or to sit through seven years of English classes without ever seeing themselves represented in an assigned book. They deserve safety and support, more than the adults in their lives need to feel comfortable. We need to practice consistent discipline against hate speech, and we need to increase our restorative justice practices. Students need to receive consequences for their actions, but all of our students also need to be given the chance to learn and grow into respectful and thoughtful young adults. We must increase representation in our staff as well as in our curriculum. Our students of color do not see themselves reflected in the adults on campus, and they do not see themselves in our history books, our English novels, our science textbooks. Many of us work on our own time for grants to purchase modern diverse books. We work on our own time to create slideshows and lectures of what and who the textbooks leave out, but this must be addressed at a site and district-wide level. I know that we are dealing with a drastically reduced budget due to and on top of a global pandemic, and our resources will be stretched thin. But now is the time to do our part to make change. Our students are watching, and they are waiting for us to take action. Do not let them down. Thank you." And one more. This is my last one I have. This is from Philip Takata, and the topic is a recommendation to address racial and socioeconomic inequities in our school district. My name is Philip Takata, and I'm the instructor of classes at the Petaluma Wildlife Museum and the teacher and director of the Petaluma High School Marine Science Program. I have been teaching at Petaluma High School since 2014, became a Petaluma resident in 2017, and was honored in 2018 as the California League of High Schools Teacher of the Year for Sonoma, Mendocino, Lake, and Humboldt Counties. I want to applaud the Board of Administrators and Petaluma City Schools for pledging to continue the discussion to address racial and socioeconomic inequities in our school district. The principles behind what you stated in last week's video, a message from us on racial injustice, are the reasons I took my family from South San Francisco and moved to this community. Petaluma is a special town, and I hope that when my ten-month-old daughter attends a PCS elementary school in four years, that she, as an Asian-American student of color, will feel supported, loved, appreciated, and appreciated for all that she is by her peers, her teachers, the community, and the community of families around her. I believe in Petaluma City Schools, and I have bet the most precious thing in my life, my family, on that belief. As we all know, a statement of commitment to fight racial injustice is only the first step towards equity in our community. The real work is the actions we take as a district to make the commitment a reality. I would like to suggest a powerful action our district can take to make the most immediate and profound effect on our school communities in terms of providing a culture of acceptance, diversity, and safety for all our Petaluma children. Make a sustained concerted effort to involve and integrate our Latinx families into the culture, decision-making, and support structures at our PCS schools. I recognize that there are other underserved students and families within our school district. While I am making a conscious appeal for one community, we shouldn't ignore the others. However, since Latinx students make up a full quarter of the population of our PCS students, I feel it pertinent, prudent, and most effective to start with this community. I believe that each school principal should oversee and provide not only the lines of communication that would allow our Latinx families to know what's going on in the school and in the lives of their children, but to actively go out and recruit the parents of our Latinx students to take part in the shaping of our school communities from here forward. Let me be clear. A generalized mass email asking for, quote, "parents to participate in the PTA" participate in the PTA is not what I'm talking about. Part of the pride, charm, and power of our Petaluma community is that we're a small town, an island in the middle of 101 that holds on to the valuable traditions that helped shape our community over the last 162 years. Many of the white families in our community grew up here and went to school here themselves. As adults, their families go to church together, their kids go to school together, play soccer and softball together, compete in 4-H and FFA together. When one of their kids has a fundraiser or wins an award or a boosters organization needs help planning an event or their teacher needs a chaperone for a field trip, they tell each other about it, talk about it, and ultimately, as a result, have the option to participate. Our schools do not function without our families, and it is indeed from our families that we derive our school culture, values, and perspective. The majority of our Latinx parents are not a part of these social groups, even though their children make up one-quarter of the student population of our district. These families, especially these parents, are not woven into the same social structure that so powerfully shapes the experiences of our children. They aren't given a fair chance to know what's going on at school, as bilingual translation services for most teachers are embarrassingly thin or absent. Parents outside of their culture aren't reaching out to them, and no one is asking for their input, volunteer work, or support. Because of this, a type of social segregation exists in our schools. A split between our white and Latinx families that is carried to their children, the end result of which is a vastly different educational experience of our Latinx children in PCS, one where they feel separate because their families are separated, or one where they feel less valued because they are less honored, and one where they feel as if their contributions to school culture are negligible because they and their families aren't part of the decision-making and their traditions and values are not recognized and accepted into the ongoing cultural and social evolution of our Petaluma community. Principals, make your teachers reach out to our Latinx parents. Encourage your teachers to build bridges with our Latinx parents and make new traditions for our school and our community that involve input leadership and direction of our Latinx families. Encourage the more active parents of our school community to reach outside of their friends and social group when looking for parental support or leadership for a school function. Personally invite the parents of Latinx students to PTA meetings, sports and band boosters meetings, FFA parent meetings, and the like. Not only does this show our Latinx students that we value them, their families, their traditions, and that they are part of us, it shows our white students and white families exactly the same thing. Isn't that the goal, that all of our children feel empowered, valued, and loved? Isn't that the lesson we want all our children to learn? I have seen the power of this firsthand in my own programs, as each time I have made a conscious and directed effort to reach out to my Latinx parents, they have responded enthusiastically, generously, and happily. Whether as a chaperone on a field trip, a contributor to a fundraiser, or the architect of a project at the museum, their children and the entirety of my class saw that brown parents were not only valued in my classroom and community, they were essential to making it work. And my brown students and their classmates knew they were valued as well. And that is all I've got.
Thank you. Those are some pretty amazing comments. I want to thank the public for all those statements. Lot of agreement there. Okay, comment, okay, comes from, "Report on activities and correspondence of the school board. Accepting Gateway to College class of 2020, handing out awards to eighth graders at Petaluma Junior High School, Zoom meeting, Santa Rosa City Schools. We were at a meeting. We also attended, several of us attended, a meeting of different board members from around the county and discovering that we're all going through the same thing. A Zoom meeting with Senator McGuire. Guys, did I leave anything out? Anything to add?
Been watching webinars on the budget.
Yeah, lots of webinars on budgets.
And the CHIPPA meeting. Maddie and I were both there.
Oh, CHIPPA meeting. Okay, good. Anything else? All right, moving on. Let's see. Okay, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. I need someone to move that in and second it and then we can talk about it.
So move to approve the consent agenda of consolidated motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a question about the student teaching agreement with Sonoma State. Our student teachers receiving training in distance learning, I mean, if we have a student teacher here. Will they know how to, I don't know if that's a question anybody can answer, but it's a concern of mine.
It's a great, it's a great question, Ellen. I think we're clearly the, depending on how, how school comes back, if it's in person, if it's distance learning. There's a lot of scenarios we could talk through. Clearly the, that any student teacher who comes on campus will be given the same training and same expectations as our, as the teachers that are on the site.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions about stuff on here? Nothing? We can vote? All in favor? I opposed? Action items. Resolution 1920 dash 38 of the Board of Education at the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Eliminating Classified Positions effective August 14th, 2020.
I don't know whether I do this now, but I would like to table. Or take out the positions of. Elementary library coordinators at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley and at Penigrove from this of. Eliminated positions, classified positions.
Need to move to amend.
I second that amendment movement.
So do you want to explain Maddie and maybe provide direction?
Yes, so I think that we had, you know, I just want to echo some of the comments that were made during. Our public comment that I'd already thought about, but I do feel, and I actually did not know how much the librarians had. Contributed during distance learning, but my understanding about these positions that are. To be eliminated is that it's because school is not going to be in session and so these positions would not be. There would be no children on campus and so they're not needed. And from my perspective, a librarian can, doesn't have to be just there, they can provide all kinds of. Distance learning tools, support for the teachers, which. They have been doing for the past two and a half months. I feel pretty strongly about this, that we really need our libraries that, and our librarians. That they can provide the books, especially with elementary school children. So, and that the fact that these teachers did step up and that they're learning. If they could also be using this time to. Get professional development because our, our distance learning is going to be with us, I think forever. So that's, I just feel that I would like to not have those positions. It's not that there's anything about these other positions that are not important at all, but I do feel that those two librarian positions. Can really contribute, they support the teachers, they support distance learning, they support our students. In a very elementary and fundamental way. That can be done without having physical presence on the campus.
So. Just in keeping with Robert's rules of order, so we need to vote on the modification first and then, right?
We can still discuss though.
We can still discuss. That's just my justification and people then can.
Well, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with you. I'm just wondering if we need to vote on pulling those out before we vote on the other thing.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
We will.
We need to do, Gary?
Well, I think there are some people that still want to chat, but yes, you will, you can do that.
Okay, so let's vote on.
They want to comment on my motion.
Okay, well, all right.
Yeah, I'll just add that.
No, go, go, go.
I think that also part of the idea of pulling these off, but not necessarily other positions. Still the idea of doing everything we can to keep the other positions and provide more flexibility in. Work that they can do that would benefit the student and parent and staff population. I personally obviously want to keep as many people employed as possible and keep people working and paid as much as possible. But if there aren't students physically coming to campus, crosswalk guards, playground supervisors and food service folks. Aren't necessarily needed for those specific roles, so. This motion or this item can really allow us to work with CSDA and other stakeholders to really make sure that. We are using folks to the best of their. Capacity and agency and also doing what we need to do to serve our families and be as adaptable as possible in this. Very, very bizarre time.
Yes, the, the board really wants to see negotiations. To negotiate flexibility and filling needed roles. So, I mean, that's rarely important to us, piggybacking on Caitlin said as far as keeping people employed. That if we can negotiate people filling different roles, then that would be very helpful toward that, keeping that employment.
And I agree with what Caitlin said, I mean, it seems like, I mean, the other ones, they are directly working with kids where again, we don't know if kids are going to be back or not. And just like from my own experience with the librarians, my own kid's school, I know that they were very active during Zoom. Started doing Zooms and things that people mentioned. So I think even if the students are not physically in school, that is one, like at least of these five positions where. They're still interacting with kids on a daily basis.
Yes.
Just to echo my statement with Maddie and everyone else, so.
So should we vote on the modification and then talk more about the other part?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of, of removing the library positions from the list of layoffs, say I?
I.
I opposed? Okay, so that's done. So now we still have to vote on the rest of the list. Comments?
Maybe a little, just a little bit of background here.
Okay.
And so first of all, I just want to state the obvious, we couldn't, we could not run school without our classified staff. We have a fabulous, fabulous people in the positions and the actual item is not about the people, it's about the positions. Right? And having flexibility with the positions to meet the needs of an uncertain model of instruction in the 2020-21 school year. Nobody here wants to make cuts and frankly, I, I agree with the board, I appreciate and agree with much of the public comment on, on the item. Especially about the quality of our staff. So the, the positions from the year round schools clearly were in uncharted times with great uncertainty. School is going to look very different than it did pre COVID-19, past couple of months, we've seen that. We're unsure about how and when we'll be returning to in-person learning. So given the uncertainty, this proposal reduces staff at sites where we are starting back up in July. As it is looking more and more likely from what we're hearing from the Department of Health, it'll be starting virtually or distant, distant learning. So the intent of this action item and is, is a temporary, in the way that we're viewing is a temporary layoff of positions listed. Clearly it's a reduction in force, but we're, depending on how and when school opens back up to in-person instruction. The intent is to come up with a thoughtful plan to bring back many of the positions listed. So in any event, the positions would remain in paid status through mid-August. For those of you who don't know, there's a 60 day notice requirement for layoffs in classified positions. So by mid-August, we would be in a much better place to be able to gauge which positions we are ready to bring back and. And what if any flexibility we may need in the, with the positions due to the changing nature of the way instruction is delivered to students. So if we were able to restore positions by mid-August, employee, the actual employees would not be impacted by the layoff. And we're looking at, you know, when in-person instruction resumes, also gives us a chance, as many of you have noted, to create flexibility in the job duties. That makes sense, given the new model of instruction to best serve the students. So the one anomaly in this list is the childcare director at Valley Vista. To give a little background on that one, the childcare director of Valley Vista historically provided oversight for the childcare programs at both Valley Vista and McKinley. For several years, the director has only overseen Valley Vista, the principal at McKinley oversees the McKinley childcare program. Furthermore, the student enrollment value is decreased over the past several years and has struggled to generate enough funds. To support the current staffing configuration. So given the declining enrollment value, this to eliminate this, this position would allow the value of this to childcare program. To run a more cost effective program and avoid significant fee increases for the families who participate. The current assistant childcare director would be able to continue to perform many of the duties related to the collection of fees. And the principal would, would be able to support the program.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Matthew, for that. And I also just want to say, I don't want anyone to think that we don't value all the positions. We are just basically looking at the ones that directly work with students every day. So, and I appreciate your explanation. Of your process and just all the added information that you gave. I appreciate that.
And I'm looking forward to hearing about negotiations where. People who were laid off could maybe change their job description to fill in other jobs that are, that are available.
And Matthew, does this mean we should expect 60 days ahead of the start of the traditional school? And getting a clearer signal on, on the modalities of instruction for those schools. A similar list for the, the non, for all the traditional calendar schools?
Yeah, I think, you know, as, I mean, it's definitely something that's been on our mind as far as what those schools, you know, that. All of our traditional schools and what, what positions, we've already had a, a conversation with CSA around that. Yeah, I think that, that we would be looking at, depending on how, how things, you know, how things turn out, but we def, we need a 60 day notice for, for any, any position that we're going to lay off, so.
We know when that direction from the, the health department may. Happen, I mean, you know, about the level, level three and.
So I was going to go over that in a little bit. The short answer is no.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other comments, questions? So I guess, yeah, I know.
I move to approve the resolution as amended.
What?
I move to approve the resolution as amended.
As amended.
A second.
Okay, unfortunately we have to vote, so all in favor? I opposed? Did I hear an opposed? Okay, good. Good, good. All right, let's see, business services, approval of the Petaluma Cities. City Elementary Joint Union High School District's Budget Revision Number Three.
I'm assuming you don't have any further questions or comments. I'm happy to answer any, if, if I haven't gone through it in enough detail.
I don't have any more. Questions. Does anybody else? Okay. All in favor?
Yeah, let's move to approve.
Well, I moved, sorry, I thought somebody already moved to approve.
I, I moved to approve the budget revision number three for 2019-20 fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? I opposed? Approval of preliminary bud, budget for Petaluma City and joint for the. Oh, 2020-21 fiscal school year.
I move to approve the preliminary budget for the 2020-21 fiscal year. For Petaluma City Schools.
A second.
Second, Ellen, comments, questions?
I just want to thank Chris for her hard work and her staff on this very difficult document.
It ain't pretty. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay. Let's see. Resolution 1920 dash 39 of the Board of Education, Petaluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, renewing the charter of Mary Collins. At Cherry Valley Charter School. This is a happy one.
So I, I would just say that I know I, I wasn't, I wasn't able to speak earlier because I was still muted, but. You know, we've, we've worked a lot on this renewal. We've really brought our charters up into the 24th century. Many of them. Were, were pretty outdated, so this is a really solid charter. We truly value. The program at Mary Collins at Cherry Valley School and we're thrilled to be bringing it forward for a five year renewal. So we feel really good about, we feel really good about the program and about bringing it forward, so.
And I, I thought that the charter was really well written.
It was a group, it was a group effort for sure and I would acknowledge Clifton Grahn as abstentia and, and Jason, I know that. You know, all of us really kind of went through the charter with our attorneys, trying to make sure that we had, had all of the components in place, so.
Well, I move to approve the resolution 1920-39 for the renewing of the charter of Mary Collins at Cherry Valley Charter School.
I'll second.
All in favor? Yeah. Yay, this is a happy thing to vote on.
Well, not only is it happy, but now all of our charters have been renewed for five years, so we can not bring any forward in 2021, so.
Great.
I think we're up to, we're up to date.
Okay, perfect. 12.2.4 Resolution 1920 dash 40 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County Sonoma. To establish temporary inter-fund transfers. And let's move that in and then ask questions.
I'll move to approve Resolution 1920 dash 40.
Second?
A second.
So, explain please.
You know, we've kind of talked about the challenges in cash flow that we're going to face. Next year and for future years, and so we thought it would be prudent to bring this forward so that it gives us flexibility. To really be able to do some inter-fund borrowings between our various funds. In order to support the general fund in particular. So we already do that on the natural with the cafeteria fund. So the cafeteria fund is a reimbursement fund, so we, we collect. Sales and we, and we record all of our free reduced meal and then we submit a claim to the state. For both federal and state reimbursement on those claims and we get it anywhere from 30 to 60 days later. So literally we're paying salary and benefits, we're paying food and we're buying stuff to support the program and we get reimbursed two months later. So we're, we're in fact loaning money regularly to the cafeteria fund because it, it, it doesn't have the cash upfront. In very much the same manner, we have lots of other funds. We have our building funds, which is where we have our bond proceeds. We have our capital, special reserve for capital outlay, which is where we account for. The transfer of redevelopment funds that are required to be used for capital improvements. We have our developer fee fund or our capital facilities fund where we account for developer fees, et cetera. So what this is really providing us is the level of flexibility. If we do get into a cash crunch, that we can move money between our funds on a very short term basis to cover our cash flow needs. So that's in simple terms what it is. It doesn't impact the budget and we record it. And so. Longer term, we may have to still consider a tax revenue anticipation note, which is a different form of, of short term borrowing. But this is a way of managing our cash flow needs without having to do that and paying the interest associated with it, so. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. Any other questions for Chris? All in favor? I?
I.
Opposed? Okay, now on to the discussion item update on reopening schools. What have we learned so far?
Well, we've learned a little bit. So. I mean, this has been a very frustrating process because there have been assumptions that have been made regarding. Information that, that you would think we would. information that, that you would think we would have at our, at our disposal throughout the state that we just simply haven't had. And so I'm going to speak a little bit to the logistical piece first, and then I'm going to ask Jason to, to, to talk a little bit about the instructional piece. All of those decisions still are, are really at the very, very beginning and need to be fleshed out. And so from the logistical piece, we just received our guidebook from California Department of Education titled Stronger Together. And it highlights some of their guidance as it relates to health and safety, instructional programs, professional development and learning, mental health, well-being. You know, how are we looking at community engagement, early learning, school services? The, the, the public comment that was had about all these questions about logistics were the same, are the very same questions that we've been trying to, to get answers to. Our next step is that this is not the guiding document for us. We are guided by county documents. And so our county is in the process of developing their local mitigation plan. And so until we get that local mitigation pa, plan, we're unpacking this document, knowing that, that it, it serves as a blueprint of sorts for the local plan. Our plan will get approved through County Office of Education, through Sonoma County Department of Health. And then we'll have a general set, of course, of parameters that we can work from. You can start really digging in and start talking with stakeholders about the logistics of opening school. So that's that piece.
There is a committee formed, correct?
Yes.
With teachers on it and community members?
Okay, but, but there has not been any meetings as of yet because we haven't received any, we don't have any information to, to start having those meetings. The second piece, though, is the instructional piece. And we, we did receive word that it was highly unlikely that our year-round schools would start in any model other than 100% percent distance learning. We also received, you know, information, it was likely, very likely that our, that our traditional schools would also start in that same methodology. Part of the recommendations that are coming out from the state are related to schools-based instruction and distance learning, independent study models. Those are the models that we currently use. We've been using two of them for years and years. We've had an independent study program for many, many years. We've obviously do physical instruction for 160 years or so on. And we, we've started to do distance learning this year. On top of all of that, we received word from PG&E that yes, you can plan on a week or two of public safety power shutdowns for next year. So that'll have to be factored into this scenario. The concept of what do we do in, in, in that situation? So we will be convening and looking specifically at the logistic piece and unpacking that once we receive that document. In the meantime, though, the instructional piece, we know going that we, that we will have distance learning moving into the next school year, certainly starting at our two new year-round schools or two year-round schools. And so the work has been largely focused on what does distance learning look like to start with? What are the best practices in distance learning? We also know with almost 100% certainty, based on all information that we have received from the county health officials and the, and the California county health officials, that what we will not do is go from a distance learning, 100% distance learning option to all of a sudden, all of our kids are back at school. There's a mid, there's a mid-step, and that's, that's going to be a hybrid instructional piece where some students are, will be, will be selecting to stay home because they won't totally feel comfortable with the guidance that's coming, or for whatever reason. But some of them have said, shared, because they don't feel comfortable with, with, with any guidance, they're going to want to see it in place first before they, they, they replace their child back into that kind of setting. So in that particular model, the committee will also at some point be looking at that and what, what are some best practices? That those, that information is still to be determined, but Jason had a meeting today. So I'm going to have him jump on, and I'm going to unmute you, Jason, and why don't you walk them through a little bit of some of the work there? You moved on me. Where'd you go? Oh, there you are.
Right up top, maybe.
There you go.
Okay, did you want me to share my screen as well?
Yeah, yeah, show your screen.
You'll have to let me.
I'm gonna try.
Co-host, I think needs to make him a co-host possibly.
Co-host?
Yeah, I will.
Hi, everyone. Be here and talk to you about the work that we've been doing.
Don't see I can, that I can from mine. Can, Michelle, can you make him a co-host from yours?
Yes, I just did.
Okay. So I have just a couple of slides to share with you, just that kind of captures the work that we've been doing with our distance learning work group. So, um, this is just a, a quick look at the different teachers that are involved in this work group. It's over 60, 60 teachers and some administrators, but mostly it's teachers. We made sure that, that they're from a range of schools, a range of grades, a range of subjects, and, and some different roles, because we have some teachers that have very different roles in classroom, like reading specialists, special ed teachers. So we made sure that we had a range of those thing, of those teachers in our group. How that, uh, how were those people selected? It was kind of a dual process, PFT nominated teachers. I, I, Sandra could talk more directly to how that was, how that came up, but it was, I think, based on interest and on leadership. Um, and then administrators, we had also communicated with principals, with our site principals and asked, hey, who are you noticing is really understanding this distance learning? And we did some observations. So the committee is a combination of PFT nominations, administrator nominations. And then as we started working, like, we got flooded with people that also wanted to be involved, so it almost doubled from 30 to 60 people practically. Uh, and that's how, how we formed the group. The goal of this group is, here's our, our working goal, is we're looking to develop district guidelines to support guaranteed and viable and rigorous curriculum by qualified teachers that ensures learning for all students. So as we go through looking at the difference models, we're making sure that we're considering this as our overarching goal, that this is what we're trying to do as a group, as a working group. There's four main areas that, that we are considering and, and, and thinking about. The first and largest one is instruction, and what are the elements that are needed? And there's that, that main, that bucket, so to speak, is there's a lot underneath that, and we've been talking about that for a while. We also, Gary mentioned a little bit about structures that we have to take into mind the different structures that we might be called on to teach under. We are, another big area that we are going to be looking at and planning for is communication. So how can we communicate with families in a way that's clear? That's consistent, that's reliable, that allows for families to communicate with us? Because we, we saw that that was a need, that, that the, the lines of communication weren't always open as they could be. So how do we improve on that? And the last one is student contact, especially if we're in a distance learning model, but even as we go into hybrid, how do we make sure that we're connecting with students and building relationships? Because that's fundamental to all the work that we do. And, and when we're in this kind of Zoom mode, it's not as easy. One of the things teachers have consistently been commenting on is the fact that this time we had the benefit of having two-thirds of a year with our kids to know who they were, and we went into distance learning, we already had relationships. When we start in the fall, how are we going to start off with these kids that we only know through, to, through the screen? Like, what would that look, you know, how do we build those relationships through this format? And so we're really thinking about that. What would that look like? Any questions so far?
Um, just a comment. I'm really, that was one of my big concerns, was connecting with students that you don't know via Zoom. Um, and I also really appreciate the communication piece. I think what's really driving everybody crazy is we don't know. We don't have those answers. We don't know, and we have to wait on bureaucracy, basically, to tell us what to do, and they're notoriously slow. So I appreciate what you're doing so far and
Yeah.
Such a big committee. I think it's great.
Jason, are you? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say the communication, I mean, we're really talking that there's two parts. There's the, how do we communicate as we get into this new model and, and bring people up to speed about what this looks like? And then there's the ongoing communication while we're in this model, because we can't rely on our old methods of communication that we did when we were always in school. We have to figure out other ways to communicate as kids are working with families. So there's almost two parts to that. Yeah, Sheldon.
I just wanted to ask, are you finding resources to help you think through building online communities? Because there are resources out there for that.
We are finding some, but I mean, if there's others that people know, they, you know, you can share them with me and teachers. We're, we're sending out a communication that, to them tomorrow about our process, and we're asking them to communicate with their reps if they have input or resources to share.
Uh, in my day job, I just finished the PD, uh, because we already know we're going to be online in the fall in the CSU, and all the professors have done a PD on building online, you know, connections with their students. Of course, these are adult students, uh, but still, it's all referenced, and so I'll do those out and I'll send them to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I wanted to share with you, we did have one meeting before our, this June 4th meeting, we had one meeting before school was out, just to kind of orient the group. But if you think back to those considerations we, we've laid out, this was our model for how are we going to move through these considerations? And you can see, we started really focusing on distance learning. We were then going to move into some, starting to look at the hybrid model that June 23rd, how do we put this whole, whole thing together? Looking at communication, then student contact, and then we're hoping by the 30th that we'll be there. I'm going to be honest, this is, this was optimistic. You know, we had a meeting today, and we're like, oh, well, we're already going to push it back one day, so we need to add another meeting, or we need to lengthen a meeting. And that wasn't a surprise. We, we thought, from the beginning, we said we might need to add more days to it. But, um, the benefit of having such a large group is that we get such a wealth of input and a lot of people involved in the process and helping to have, have good thoughts going into it. The challenge is that bigger groups move slower, so we just are, are going to be okay with that and move at the pace it needs to move, trying, trying to still get it done. So we're going to have to do a lot more work now, because we don't want to, we can't solve this problem, you know, by August 1st. It needs to be done sooner. So we'll be adding more meetings in.
Professional development, is that part of your meetings for teachers as far as distance learning goes?
It, it's gonna, it's, it's part of the conversation, but it's going to be part of the conversation as we develop the models, then we're going to have to say, well, what kind of professional development do we need? And I, and I think that we're going to see that we're going to need different professional development for different teachers. You know, some teachers were, some teachers have a lot of best practices that they're bringing to the table already. Uh, and so their professional development needs are very different than some teachers that this is, you know, going to be a, a big learning curve for them.
I just have a quick question about the, um, the teachers from Pen Grove and Cherry Valley and their representation on the, um, on the committee. Because they, they have to start so soon. I was just wondering how this is going to get to them.
We have, um, members from both schools on, on that committee.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, they have representation. And, um, yeah, so, so they will be able to share, but we're also, as a committee, I'm working with Sandra, we, we are having additional meetings to, to make sure that we're all on the same page, and how do we communicate this to our staff as we go forward? Because a lot of times we do work, and if we don't communicate it, our, our, people don't know that it's going on. So we want to be transparent about what we're doing and be able to solicit input so we can do our best to work through the accordion process of back and forth with the committee and our entire staff.
Excellent. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd share with you is that we did realize that, that there are some, there are some subgroups that we needed to make that would die, take deeper dives into some topics, for example, scheduling, especially both distance learning, but as we go into a hybrid, if we do, like, when we're at a hybrid model, that schedule is, is going to be very different than, by necessity, than our traditional one. So we're going to have to be talking about what those schedules look like. We have a group that's focusing very deeply on distance learning tools. Another one that's kind of, that's been already meeting and talking about communication. And then there's a, a fourth group that's looking at learning spaces, and they're working with a logistics committee that includes other stakeholders, our, our classified staff and other members of the district and, and the school community to look at logistics. These groups are doing that work to then bring ideas and suggestions back to the main group to, to vet it through, through the main group. And, and that's it. Any questions?
I think that communication piece is really key. I mean, that's, that's what we're hearing is why aren't they telling us what's going on? Of course, we don't know, really know what's going on. But it's, it's really important to kind of ease some of that anxiety that I see among board members, among parents, teachers.
But Ellen, I think you're, I think you hit it on the nose that even when we don't know, I think that needs to be communicated.
Yes.
I'm, I'm hearing a lot of frustration and, and misunderstandings because we don't know yet what the modalities will look like. Even that is information that can at least maybe calm some nerves.
Yeah.
Uh, Jason, um, could I ask, or maybe you're already doing this, but in, in this distance learning committee, can you be thinking strategically about the PG&E blackouts too? When there's no power, you know, I, I my biggest, my biggest fear is always about lost instruction days. And, uh, you know, if there's a silver lining to this pandemic, it's that we're learning how to deliver education in, in a different modality, but when there's no power too, you know, it would, it would be, it would be like independent study or something like that, but are, is your committee thinking about it, and can your committee?
We can, we can think about that. We did, it did come up in discussion today because we were talking about that, and then we said, well, if there's power outages, this whole distance learning model won't work the way we're thinking about it. I think our, our strategy will probably be to, to get the base, what, what will it typically look like in distance learning? And then we'll have to pivot and say, okay, and now how does it change if we have no power? But that's certainly something that we can and should consider.
Also, about, um, uh, students that don't have ax, um, internet access, or it's really sketchy internet access, or they live very rurally and they just don't have it. Are you talking about that as well?
Yeah, and we actually have already done a lot of work on that. When we went into distance learning in the fall, we, Cliff and I worked with the principals to do a very, a, a very comprehensive look at which, which students don't have access to internet, and how can we support them? Some of them, it was helping them to get, to sign up for the free internet. Others, they live in places where it can't get internet. Like, a lot of times we'd see people that may, maybe live on a ranch, and they're on a, on a, a second house, and the internet will only go to one house. So we, we actually just received, we've been working with AT&amp;T to get wireless hotspots for those families that don't have it. So we've identified who those people are that need those hotspots, and then we, we're focusing on how do we bring them up, like, get them the resources they need so they can access the very best curriculum that we're trying to put together.
Good.
Um, there, there will be cases that maybe they don't have access, and we, and we have already been working on what does that option look like? And it's more paper, pencil, other models, but, but we're, we're trying to see how do we get everyone the resources they need so everyone can have access. That's our goal.
Good. Thank you.
I have a, a question. I don't know whether anybody has the answer to this, but if you've adj, if you've adjusted in the committee, if it's even within the purview of the committee, is our, our parents are going to be going back to work? And so what does a distance learning model look like when you don't have your parents at home? That's just something that's always kind of stymied me in terms of we're, we're talking about a, a model that worked for two months because no one was going to work. And have, have, have you guys talked about that, um, at all, or is this just like this is? And have, have, have you guys talked about that at all? Or is this just like, this is, we're just looking at curriculum and, and instruction?
We, we've talked about it.
Or like parent, parent education also.
No, those are, I mean, those are really relevant questions. We are talking about instruction, but that's about, that's the support for instruction. If you're at home, you're, you need some support at home. So we have talked about that and not only, not only access, but the kind of, the kind of different situations that kids have in their life that might get in the way of them being able to access the curriculum. And we don't have, we don't have like the magic bullet solution for that yet. But in our conversations today, some of our groups were, were making sure that we had language that talked about, to talked about as guidance to the teachers. Here's the general idea that we're going for. And we're leaving room for supporting students that have other circumstances and being flexible to support them. So we're thinking about it. We don't have the answer to that yet. We're, we're wrestling with it.
What about the social emotional piece? The trauma piece?
Is that also, that it, that is, that is on the table and on the agenda. I know in the, in the guidelines that Gary had shared from Tony Thurman, in the instructional section, there's a whole big chunk that's on social emotional learning. So it is, it is a priority and, and that will be taken into account. I mean, to be, to be just frank about it, this, this is so big that this committee, we're trying to take one step at a time. You know, so all of these, we, I anticipate we will get there, but right now we're taking our very first steps of what is the basic, what is the basic distance learning model look like for us? And then how does it need to change for different situations and different students?
Great. Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
So more information will be coming as we get some. I know that, that some of the board are going to be meeting with Dr. Harrington, I believe, on the 10th.
Yep.
That correct?
March.
Tomorrow. Yeah. To get a little bit of information, you know, you, you'll definitely get a sense of some of the frustration that you've heard from him. As, as we've all tried to, to, to put some meat on this thing. So we can start talking with staffs about what options we have, but we're going to get there. And you know, I think that they're doing really great work in committee and, and I think the, the process itself will, will end up in a place where I think hopefully there, where teachers, students and parents feel really good about it.
Maddie and I sat in on a, a Zoom meeting with board members from all over the county. And we, we heard the same thing that we've been hearing from, at our board meetings is, is the anxiety of not knowing what's going on, of not knowing if we're going to have enough money to open the schools. How do we, you know, they have all these things that they're telling us we have to do, but how can we afford to pay for it? And it just, it's countywide and I'm sure it's statewide too. It's like there's just so many unknowns. It's really rather upsetting. Although I will add that I was in a Zoom meeting with, with McGuire, our representative, and he said that the legislature's top priority is not to cut. He also said that so far the tax, the taxes are coming in at about 500 million over their estimate, which is a good thing. He also volunteered, and I want to ask you guys this. He offered to come sit in on a board meeting and talk, and talk if we want him to. If we think that's something we, we want him to do, maybe I'll email him for our next board meeting. What do you guys think?
Be great.
Okay.
Feed to the fire. Gary, how many days did you say PG&E was warning us about?
Um, it was upwards of two weeks.
Two weeks? Oh, I had five days.
No, like just five to 10 days, not kind of in that world. So deep breaths, everybody. We're going to, we're going to, we're, we're going to get our information out as quickly as we can, but you know, it's, it's a little tricky. This is a very, very, I encourage anyone to go through the guidebook and if they truly read through the CDE document, they realize how complex this is.
Yeah, it's unprecedented. I mean.
And expensive.
Yeah, very.
You are on 14 now.
Future business.
Yeah.
For all that information. It was great.
Yeah, Jason, that was great.
Very appreciative. Okay, future business. So I'm going to email Mr. McGuire and see if he'll join us at our next board meeting.
I wanted to follow up on several of the public's comments on our SROs and I wanted to ask Chris if, if that one comment was correct, that right now we don't have a, an active contract with the police department. Is, is that true?
We have SROs on campus. They were a part of the program through the Department of Justice Grant. Since I've been here, I've worked with Danny Miller for about four months and then the police department just didn't have the staffing and resources to continue it. And now our Department of Justice grant is gone. So we haven't had them on campus this entire semester and in the foreseeable future, won't have.
Resolution about that at our next meeting. And I have spoken with school board members from Minneapolis.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, it, having officers on campus just is, in this environment, I just think is a very bad idea.
I would just add that in the past four years since I've been here and before, we have had contracts with the police department for other things other than SROs.
Yes.
Specifically at athletic events to provide additional security for student safety. And so you, you know, I'm not sure with the pleasure, I, I heard SRO in the presentation. But I just wanted to put out there that we do actually partner with our police department for various things such as trainings. When we do the, every 15 minutes, there, there are many other ways in which we have partnered with them. So I would just I'm sorry?
One of my campus uniforms.
Well, we could talk about it.
I don't think that they were in uniforms towards the end. Remember when they gave that presentation, they were allowed to.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yes. So as, 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 as things arise, we can certainly come to the board and say, okay, this is the thought. And then perhaps we can have more conversation about how to ensure student safety at the same time for certain events where having their presence may be a true benefit to our, our students and staff. So we can talk more about that. But I just want to put out there, what, we, we do have more partnerships other than just the SROs.
Right. It's not necessarily that contracts that go year to year to year.
Yeah. But I do agree, Ellen, it is hard for some kids to see them in their uniforms.
Yeah.
But I, I did want to clarify something. Michelle had asked me to clear up, I did not vote no on that amended resolution. I guess it came out as a no, but it was actually a yes. So that's all for everyone watching. She said, it'll be in the minutes.
Yeah, doing a real quick to be like, uh, girl.
Challenge with technology.
Yes.
The delays, so.
Okay, um, I, I, future business. I know we passed something about ethnic.
Maddie, Maddie has something. It sounds like she wants to.
Oh, sorry, Maddie.
You wanted to do something, Ellen?
Well, I just wanted to, to bring up ethnic studies again to find out, you know.
Still going through the state process. It, our, ours was really just to support the model curriculum at the state level. So we can certainly take action to start implementing it in Petaluma City schools, but my biggest issue would be finding an instructor to teach it.
Well, I would just like to put that down as for future business.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so, so Patsy Knight, who's a trustee in Old Adobe is, is a, a friend of mine. And I, so we just kind of inadvertently ran into each other and we started talking and we were thinking, why, why, why do we not have, you know, have some relationship with Old Adobe? Especially during this time when we heard from other, when we heard the other districts talk. One of their concerns is what happens when a district like, let's say Windsor opens up and Santa Rosa doesn't, and they have parents that then go up to Windsor. So there's this, you know, we may lose students, we may gain students because there's no continuity. So we were kind of talking about it and we thought, you know, Old Adobe is, is, has traditionally have their ways of doing things and we have ours. So we don't really want to, you know, do something that's to get, you know, like lockstep. But we were thinking about having two people from each one of our boards meet and kind of develop a common message that is saying something to the effect of we're in Petaluma, we're all Petalumans and it's, we're a community. And we want to make sure that our educational community knows that both districts have have the similar priorities and that's, you know, that they know that their children are going to be as safe as we can make it. And that they will have instructional integrity to the best that we can make it. And have some kind of common message that would go out to the community that, you know, we do talk to each other. We, we, we have different ways, we have different, I don't know, I don't know whether it's not priorities, it's just ways of doing things that have been, you know, created over the years. But I don't know. So I just wanted to throw it out there, do it as future business. She's going to bring it up to her board on Thursday. We can only have two people because of the Brown Act. Because we didn't know whether we could actually meet together.
Have to probably zoom it. Or you could meet in a backyard and sit apart.
Yeah, I mean, even just a Zoom meeting, you know.
What about the other districts in, in Petaluma?
You know, I thought about WA because.
We're partners with, we're partners with all of them in our South County Consortium. So they would, I, I would anticipate they would probably feel left out if they weren't part of.
Okay, it would be fine with me. Patsy was just thinking that we're probably the two big ones. Cause I had said, why don't we get WA in it too? And, and she said, well.
Everyone's are going to feel left out. It needs to be all or nothing.
Yeah, I agree with Caitlin.
Okay.
I went to Old Adobe and all my friends had Patsy Knight, so.
I had her granddaughter.
Any more future business? Anything else?
Do it, email me. Yeah.
I think Sheldon had mentioned this in passing, like just giving, even if we don't have full information on reopening or whatever, if we could just have this, if the sites can at least like update parents, like here's where we are in the process. I really liked Jason's presentation. It was very detailed. But just like something like, hey, here's where we are. This is what it might look like, just to kind of prepare people. So they don't feel blindsided like July 15th or August 1st or something.
Well, and it's also, that was, you know, the survey asking parents what they were comfortable with. I really heard that woman with the special ed kid who was saying, how can I make a decision if I don't know what any of these things look like? So I think it's, it's important
Right.
to get that information out. This is what, this is what a hybrid model would look like. This is what, so that parents kind of can glom onto whatever information we can give them.
Yeah.
Cause I just got the survey today from my daughter. It was in the survey, but like Kari was asking questions that were, those were very site specific. So I mean, I think if she had heard from her principal, then maybe she would know, okay, let me reply to him and ask him these specific questions.
Yeah.
I think the challenge, the challenge we, we have is, is we're, we're trying to thread that needle of following a process and getting everybody involved in it. And when we send out a little bit of information, then there's an assumption there's more information that we're not sharing. It's, it becomes a very vicious cycle. You know, the email, the, the, the message that we sent to families was to reassure them so they didn't leave the district that we were going to offer the same services that we always offer. Which is what we, but we didn't get into specifics at all on that. You know, the, the, the survey was to, to get it, to, to gauge, and it says clearly in this, this is not locking you into your decision. We want to get a sense of where you are right now as a family, because we're trying to figure out how many of our students for staffing purposes are, are looking at a, a distance model, basically, or the independent study model. So I got to think about how we can do that. I think we can give some more information, but I don't think we can give a lot of logistics information because I don't have it. I'd be making it up and I, and, and I would be leery to do that.
I think we just need to say that, like, this is all the information we have. We don't have more as we get more, we'll communicate it.
What we can do is when, when, what I, what I anticipate is going to happen, the question you asked before was about county health. I don't really know the answer to that, but it could be as early as at the end of this week. It could be next week. We, when we get the local mitigation plan, we can send that out. So people can see what the guidelines that we're looking at and, but it's overwhelming. So it's almost too much information.
Maybe the local one.
We'll, we'll see what we can do. We'll try to see what, what, what information can we actually, and, and you know, I, I remind myself that we're, you know, we technically ended school on what, the 31st? And we're only nine days from that. So, so there isn't a lot of time between that, that window to now. And so what we'll, we'll try to be able to do is give some updates, maybe from some of the work that the teachers are doing. As well as some of the information that we're getting from the county. And as we move forward so that they, they can at least start thinking about it. But the real specifics, I have a feeling are, are not going to get fleshed out until, till well into July. And we may already be, we potentially already be in a distance learning model at, obviously at our year rounds. Which we still have to work, we're, we're, we are what, what Dr. Harrington said is very accurate. We are building the plane in midair. Doesn't feel great, but you know, the, the, the we're just going to get some guidelines and, and we don't know right now. Because we don't know what's happening with the trailer bill, we have no idea about instructional minutes. There's no way to set up a schedule. Cause we don't know what those parameters are. So, so we're trying to get a little bit more information on that and hope that the trailer bill will be approved at the same time the budget is approved. If it's not, because often the trailer bills come later, that's the term trailer bill. Then we're operating on a lot of speculation. And that, that, that makes us all uncomfortable when we're dealing with lives of it, you know, we're doing with so many employees and so many student lives.
I just wanted to ask if there's a, if, just to follow up on my request for a teacher audit. You know, to find out how they're feeling, what they feel comfortable teaching and whether they feel comfortable coming back if we're ever allowed back. I know that it was something when we were talking about the parent audit and whether they plan on coming back. I had asked for a teacher audit also.
Yeah. I've got it down. We can, we definitely can do that here. The chat, one of the challenges on that one is going to be kind of goes to if I don't know the particulars, if I don't know the logistics, it's hard for me. So if we can try to get some of those logistics down first, then do an audit, but we will do, and we will do a teacher audit.
Good.
I think it is encouraging that so many of them are on the committee. So hopefully, you know, they'll also be seeing their wholehearted, honest opinion at that time as well. That should also give really good indications.
Yeah. Yeah.
I also wanted to ask Liz, girl, I was going to put you on the spot. So circle up training. Are we still?
I had that note.
Oh, yeah. And last I talked to him, I mean, we're still good for the board one on August 11th and then all the subsequent dates that I looked at in that board thing. However, I need to re-get back with them because we're all, I mean, some of that will depend on can we meet in person with them on August 11th? If not, are, is there a way that they could present this information over Zoom? I know that a lot of it is a very personal thing, you know, sitting in a circle. So I need to get back with them on are they willing to modify, because I know we just want to get started.
Yeah.
Can't make it an in-person experience on August 11th, is there a way they can modify to do a Zoom experience for us on that date?
And speaking of August, what about the August 7th graduation thing that's happening with that? Are we doing that? We don't know?
You know, it's a lot of the same questions that we have.
The high schools are planning it like, or the high school principals are planning it like they do their normal ceremonies.
Great.
So it's just a wait and see from county health is to size groups we can have together, like first pull up or a graduation event.
Cool, okay.
One more thing, one more thing, okay, the Stop It app, are we still using the Stop It app as a district to report anonymously? Because that came up in some people's comments.
Yeah, I heard that, we have anonymous tip line, I, and I know, I know Kennelworth is still using Stop It avidly. And they actually brought it to an AP counselor meeting to kind of present. I can, I'll check in with the other sites, I'm imagining, are you thinking mostly for secondary, middle school and high school?
All of them.
Yeah, I think, I mean, and I, because, you know, when I was at Kennelworth, that's when Amy Schluter piloted it and it was great. I mean, of course, you got some kids playing on there, but for the most part, we got some really good, like kids who probably wouldn't have come forward had it not been anonymous. So I mean, we could do it district wide.
Need to know that that, that's available.
Yeah, and I know it's alive and well in the district, how robust it's being rolled out or has been rolled out at each site. I can check inside to side on that, I definitely know Kennelworth is still using it.
I'd like to see it used at all the sites. I mean, even elementary school, things happen.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, you guys? All right, well, we do not need to adjourn to closed session, so I am going to. For participating, we had 94 people at one point. Yeah, I know, it was great, I kept admitting people. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
All right, so I am going to officially adjourn the meeting. Bye bye. Bye, everybody, stay healthy. Yeah, you too, take care. You too. Good job.